Welcome, everyone, to tonight's Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, June 2, 2015. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And yes, that was a new name that you just heard. Our newest council member, Jeffrey Durham, has joined us. Congratulations again for your appointment. And if you would, in your first, or actually, your second official action since you adjourned our last meeting, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please.
Please join us. Thank you. I think, do we still have a couple more seats over here on the far window side? Keeney, if you, Bruce doesn't have to have his folder in that chair. He can actually let you sit there. Thank you, Nathan, for the extra chairs. We'll go ahead and move on to adoption of tonight's agenda if there are no corrections or changes.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next up, public comment. And I know that we do have one very special proclamation to start off our public comment portion as Tracy is coming forward from Senator Wolk's office. I do want to just mention, this is a time for anything that's not on tonight's agenda, so there will be public comment during our individual agenda items, but this is if there's something unrelated to the items tonight. So Tracy, welcome.
Good evening, I guess, yeah. Mayor Dunbar and the rest of City Council, my name is Tracy Crumpin and I am here on tonight on behalf of Senator Lois Wolk, really to honor Ella Gates' family. And I'd like to go ahead and introduce and have Truman come up to the podium, if I may. When the senator heard of Ella's passing, she was very sorry to hear what had happened, but she certainly seemed like that Ella lived a very full life, so she wanted to go ahead and honor Ella and the family for all of Ella's contributions to the town of Yountville. This is a memorial resolution. These aren't done a lot up at the Capitol. These are done for very special civic-minded individuals that really give their heart and soul to the community. So this is on behalf of Senator Lois Wolk and Assemblymember Bill Dodd. It is a joint resolution. I won't read the entire wherethes, but there are a couple that I will go ahead and point out. Whereas recognizing the need for a town government to give Yountville the impetus to grow as a community, Ella and Thurman, with the help of friends including Charlie Williams, an attorney, and Jack Forster, a local property owner, created the Yountville Improvement Club to advocate incorporation during the first half of the 1960s, going door-to-door organizing dances, bake sales, and speaking at the veterans' hall, at the veterans' home to gather more allies. Whereas the organization garnered enough votes on its second attempt to incorporate Yountville, and on February 4, 1965, the town became Napa County's fourth municipality, and Ella Gates appointed to the first city, now town clerk, and Thurman Gates became Yountville's first elected mayor. Resolved by Senator Lois Wolk and Assemblymember Bill Dodd that the exemplary life and illustrious record of personal, professional, and civic accomplishments of Ella Gates be memorialized henceforth and thereafter, and her bereaved family and friends be extended heartfelt sympathy for everything that your family has done, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more little item here. The senator also adjourned the Senate in Ella's memory, so here's the documentation for that. Thank you so much.
Yes. Well, I'd like to, I don't know which...
The one on the left. The other one's the light.
I'd certainly like to thank the council and certainly our legislators from here on their acknowledgement and so on. Marge, thank you very much for your work. You know, when I became introduced to this community, I was a smart aleck senior in high school, and all of a sudden I found that we were moving to Yountville, which I wasn't quite sure why at the time. And I look back, it was, I think, somewhat unfortunate that I wasn't here for these first four, five, six years of all this work that my parents put in along with others, because I, of course, was off to college. And I came back in the summer, and every time I came back in the summer, I had to work real hard because my father and mom were developing their properties and so forth. And so I missed some of that activity, and I think it's significant that they felt a connection, obviously, to this community, and of course are both buried in this community. So, you know, my mom and my dad were, they were representatives of their generation. They were hard workers, they were honest. Things were pretty much black and white for them, frugal to themselves and generous to others and other activities. And so it's with really great pride that I accept this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's really our privilege and honor to be able to recognize what the Gates did as founding members of our community. And a special thanks to Councilmember Muller for helping document her life and getting, for perpetuity, getting Ella on camera to tell some of her stories about the early days of Yountville. And it was also our pleasure to have her as one of our grand marshals of the Yountville Days Parade last year, a year and a half ago. So that was really our pleasure. And thank you very much for being here tonight. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment about anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one else coming forward, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. And there is one item for consideration. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
If I can just make one comment?
Yes. Councilmember Durham?
My notes are gone, so this has got to be up at the top of my head, so I'm sorry. But I watched the video for the presentation for this item as well and fully read the ordinance as well, so I'm fully ready to move forward to vote on this. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification noted. And we have our screen. So please forgive us. This is like meeting two of our vote casting. We have electronic voting going on, and it's had its share of glitches. So if you see us all looking at our tablets with, you know, consternation, you'll understand why. But we have a motion from Councilmember Doran Becker, seconded by Councilmember Muller. If you'd all please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously, 5-0. So thank you very much. And the system worked. We're off and running.
All right, there we go.
So before, you know, I see we are excusing some of our special guests here tonight. So Cindy, if you want to just take your time to start our presentation here, it'll be the Yountville Chamber of Commerce Marketing and Promotional Services Annual Report.
We'll flip over. We'll flip over.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Dunbar, Vice Mayor Hall, council. My name's Cindy Sosarun. I'm the president, CEO of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, and we're here to bring you an update for the year on the second, moving into the second year of our agreement with town for marketing Yountville. Nice transition. Can everybody see okay? The Yountville Chamber of Commerce, governed by an all-volunteer Board of Directors, shall actively market the town of Yountville and chamber members to promote tourism and local businesses while contributing to the quality of life for the community. That's our mission statement. The Chamber Board, all of the actions that we take and all the planning that we engage in, keeping this mission statement in mind, is to support the business community, to promote the town of Yountville, and to all of that, of course, generating the revenue that brings us all the services that we enjoy in our tiny little town. We have a new board in place. We now have 11 board members. The chairman of the board, Eric Housley, Ranch Markets, could not be here this evening. He would be making this presentation instead of me. Vice Chair Keeney Sanborn with the Bardessono is here this evening. And when I call your name, if you could stand up so the council recognizes our board members. Our treasurer, Steve Rogers, you're in good hands.
You don't have to stand up, Steve. We know you.
Julie Sekthiar, the HR Director for TKRG, is here this evening. She is our recording secretary. Michael Inonoria is with the Vintage Estate. I don't believe he's here this evening. Joel Quigley could not be here. He is with Jessup Sellers. Michael Tigret, is Michael here tonight? He is with Masonry Napa Valley. Rebecca Koch is with Chiorello. And Lisa Cox owns The Countryside. Kim Whistler is with Cliff Lady Vineyards, and she's here this evening. And of course, Alyssa Wickstrom, she was with the council or the board last year. So Joel, Michael, Rebecca, and Kim were all elected in this past election to the Board of Directors for the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. We developed a vision, excuse me, a vision statement a couple of years ago. One of the boards came up with this vision statement, working with community and business leaders. We will maintain Yountville's reputation as the cultural and culinary heart of the Napa Valley and provide services necessary to be relevant to our membership. And of course, the Chamber Board sees its role as facilitators of that vision statement while providing value to our membership. A little snapshot of budget to actual, and I did hand out, gave to the clerk, a draft budget that was just approved this morning for the Chamber of Commerce, along with some visitation statistics and demographics. Budget to actual, currently, we're doing fairly well at the end of the third quarter, ahead of projected revenues by about 37%. And unfortunately, with increased revenue comes increased expenditures, and we're just a little bit over our budgeted expenditures by about 18%. The board has approved this draft budget, the one that was just handed out that goes with the narrative. And that includes potential grant funding from Visit Napa Valley as well as the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District, Yountville. Visit Napa Valley has been, has granted us a $30,000 grant in the past towards operating expenses of the Welcome Center. And so we're using those funds to enhance operations at the Welcome Center, which we see approximately 32,000 to 38,000 visitors annually. Some of the statistics, 79% to 80% are from the United States, and about 20% are international visitors. And the demographics are broken down in your handout. We're open daily, 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have three professional staff members, three full-time staff members. Dave Hummer is the member relations and Welcome Center manager. Dave is here tonight. Sarah is our social media and marketing manager. She is on her honeymoon, so it's no longer Sarah Russon Dickens, it's Sarah Farley. We have about 22 volunteers that we depend on daily to greet visitors, educate our visitors, and promote Yountville. We, in partnership with Visit Napa Valley, we have rebranded our Welcome Center sign with the international symbol for information, and that's taking place throughout the valley at all the Welcome Centers. So here's the part that I'm going to stumble through quickly. Our website statistics, and it's important in our agreement with the town of Yountville to track statistics and in particular, our website. And I don't know what any of this stuff means, so I will, this is Sarah's role, but sessions, the site's been, it means the site is being, the amount of times a site is actually visited, users, the people who have visited our site, both new and returning, page views. On average, the duration is two to three minutes per session. I guess that's meaningful. And apparently, we are above average, basically. People enjoy the content of our website and find it useful. So I'm sure that's meaningful to those folks. Statistics, more statistics. I don't have any notes on this, but I think they're important. So if you're familiar with website statistics, I'll be happy to answer any questions or at least have David Wells from A Bright Idea answer questions for you. Social media, Facebook statistics. Impressions are the number of times a post from our page is displayed. And organic impressions is the total number of unique people who were shown a post through unpaid distribution. And I guess viral means, viral counts all the people who saw a story about a page in their news feed, or tickler, or something of that nature, whatever that means. And I'm sure those statistics are important, too. Richard, you're smiling. You'll probably understand all this. And basically, our content is interesting on our website, and people are interacting with it, and that's significant. That means something. Twitter, that's another one of those terms I'm not too familiar with, but I know you all know and understand and tweet regularly, I'm sure. Total followers, we have, as you can see, a bunch of them. It looks like, I don't know, 1,188, am I reading it correctly? Anyway, connections made, a lot of people are following us. Engagement is how well we are communicating with our audience. Industry standard is 75%, and I believe we are above that. And influence is an indicator of our growth and interest level among our audience. Industry standard, again, is 75%, and we're doing very well in that regard. I wish Sarah was here. Instagram and Pinterest. Instagram, 178 total pictures with posts of 3,500 people engaged and 761 followers. And Pinterest is an area that I think we're going to be, Instagram and Pinterest, developing over the next fiscal year. I guess, she has a note here, the simplest way to look at social media statistics is the engagement. If people are not engaged or excited about your content, then you are doing something wrong. Facebook and Twitter have changed the way this is measured to be more accurate. Since these sites are under our control, we plan spending more time on Instagram and Pinterest. And while our numbers are above or at industry standard, it's important to keep the sites up to date and provide fresh content. And that, of course, is what we work with the marketing committee each year to bring new programming to the off-season. More social media, TripAdvisor. We have been tasked with managing the TripAdvisor page for the town of Yountville. And I guess one way to compare is to compare one month this year to the same month last year. And the comparison helps us understand how the month's traffic fits into the bigger picture. And when this is done, we see that our page views are constant. Our interaction rate, however, is increasing. And I guess this means the content is engaging and travelers are finding interest, and instead of, they're looking in Yountville instead of going elsewhere. So social media, it's busy. We keep Sarah busy about 32 hours a week. Actually, we keep her busier than that, but with the rest of the items that were, we do, her responsibility is for Foursquare, Swarm, LinkedIn. She updates those as needed, and then she also produces our e-newsletter and our e-bulletin. And the e-newsletter goes out to our general mailing list every other week, and the e-bulletin is geared towards our membership and focuses on business interests. So I'm sure you've all seen those. Under the contract with the town, we are responsible for producing our two signature events each year. We produce the 26th Annual Festival of Lights and the 22nd Annual Taste of Yountville, and I'll get to how that was developed in a minute. But we started a new process selling online advance sale tickets to these events, and that has generated quite a bit of revenue. And both events have been profitable, very well attended, and met all of our expectations. We partnered Taste of Yountville with Yountville Live this year. Yountville Live was a first-time event for us. It was sponsored by Sunset Magazine, Volvo Cars of North America, American Airlines, among other sponsors. It was produced by Live in the Vineyard. And of course, the Yountville Chamber of Commerce was responsible for part of the production, funded by, in addition to the above sponsors, of course, the Napa Valley TID Yountville, the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, the town. Our gross income for the event was about 300, a little over 300,000. However, expenses exceeded revenue, and we...
Dr. Mars, your words, and I'll be damned.
We retained, we had a net loss. On that event, we are talking about doing the event again in 2016, and the budget that the board, the draft budget that the board approved this morning reflects that. Sunset, as I said, or if I didn't, Sunset Magazine is very interested in our media, being our media sponsor again this year. Volvo Cars of North America is very interested in coming back. They were very pleased with the numbers that they were exposed to, with Yountville, Taste of Yountville, the folks that they brought in. And the music component was very well received, and it was, by those who attended, it was a valuable experience that we're interested in developing. So we may have Yountville Live 2016. That's being discussed. The other significant portion of the agreement with the town of Yountville is our public relations and marketing. And at this point, I'm going to ask the McKenzie Agency to come up and describe the next few slides, and following the McKenzie Agency, we'll have A Bright Idea, our marketing firm, come up and describe their slides and the information contained in those slides. Karen McKenzie is the leader of the pack at the McKenzie Agency, and...
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. Pleasure to be back. I'll just give you a sense of what our overall objective looks like. We're establishing a career-long relationship with Key Food, Wine, and Destination Media to Taste Life here in Yountville, and cultivate Yountville as a feature story destination showcasing most of our food, lodging, restaurants, shopping, and entertainment properties. So that is our charge. So just to give you a sense of how we tell the Yountville story, this is a snapshot of your greatest hits this past year or year-to-date. We had stories, and when we say stories, we qualify them to make sure that we have at least a representation of every destination, every lodging, every restaurant, and property, five, at least five of the stakeholders identified in each story. And they're directly attributable to our communication with the media. And to give you a quick snapshot, we were seen everywhere from the Baltimore Sun to Sacramento Bee, Zagots, the Cron, of course, and the Register. So we've got a nice concentration of California-based media, so we get them from our major feeder markets, as well as high-profile national media, which is very important to Yountville. And to give you a sense of the total impressions, we're looking at over 100 million this year to date, and your cost per thousand is 64 cents to reach those 1,000 consumers. So if you have any questions whatsoever, just sing out. But to give you a sense of, I wanted to give you a bit of context, if I may. If you look at 64 cents per thousand for public relations messaging, to give you a sense of what it would cost to advertise in a magazine, you're looking at $8 to $20 to reach those 1,000 consumers. If you were to do social media, you were looking at $4 to $8 per thousand. And then if you were to do direct mail, you're looking at $26 to $27 to reach those same 1,000 consumers. So PR, in my opinion, of course, I'm biased, is a very cost-effective marketing execution, and I believe very strongly, especially if you have all of the merits that Yountville And I will turn now over to David, right?
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
David, just, yeah, adjust that up a little bit. Thank you.
So this year, we were kind of charged with creating a video for the town of Yountville that really promotes everything that Yountville's about and everything that Taste Life here represents. So what we did is kind of worked with the marketing committee in the chamber to creatively conceptualize what this video would entail, develop a script, everything that comes with producing and creating a video. There's a long list there, you know, from on-location filming to light setup to facilitating interviews and models and editing and animation, to the custom graphics kind of at the end. I'll kind of just let the video speak, you know, for the work that we've been doing this past year. But what we also did during the video shoot is take some still photographs that now the chamber has in its ownership to utilize in its marketing and PR of the town and on its website and social media, so that they have ownership of those photos now. You know, we worked with a lot of the properties and a lot of the business owners to, you know, really capture what Yountville's all about. So we are going to show this quick video, if you don't mind. Is there sound?
It's possible, Cindy.
What makes Yountville unique and different is truly the heart of Napa Valley in so many ways.
It's also the quaintest, most beautiful, and has the highest concentration of attractions, like wineries, like restaurants. We really are, in Yountville, the restaurant capital of the world.
And we have so many things to do. And there's food, there's wine, there's arts. Arts have blossomed here, not only on the street and in the shops, but we have places like the Lincoln Theater, which is a world-class performing arts center. We have film festivals coming here. Life here is great. That's why I am still here. I've had opportunity elsewhere, but I'll never leave Yountville.
When I think about the secrets of Yountville, I think about not just the great restaurants and all of the things that you can walk to, I think about the parks and the natural beauty and where you can ride your bike and go hiking and be indoors and outdoors and just have a completely fulfilling experience in a day.
It's got everything. You come and you park your car as far as this valley goes, park your car, you never have to get in your car again.
Like one-stop shop. World-renowned restaurants, great shopping, amazing wine.
Yeah, I think people get comfortable really quickly and easily here. I think it's just kind of a relaxed setting that nobody's feeling, you know, on edge. It's just kind of, you settle in and you get in the groove, and it's fun.
I think, you know, the best-kept secret in Yountville is really being able to just walk through Yountville and experience the serenity of our community, whether it's walking across Madison, up Washington Street, stopping at the garden and just admiring the way the strawberries grow. Those are really wonderful secrets.
Hi, I'm Thomas Keller.
Just some quick credits, which we don't really have to watch, but just kind of thanks everybody that was a part of this video and shows journalists or people that are looking kind of where Yountville is in Napa Valley in relation to San Francisco. So-
[inaudible]
All the interview subjects and all of the people that coordinated locations and staff members. I don't know how to go back, but that was kind of our mission this year, was to create this video that now the chamber can use on its website, the McKenzie Agency can use it in PR, and we can use it on the TripAdvisor page. It kind of really just tells the story of Yountville. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for sharing that.
So, that's what we've been up to this year for the town of Yountville. And we have developed goals. We've got some, we've got some special subcommittees on the board. We're developing a business plan to perhaps revisit the concept of the Welcome Center, look at additional revenue sources, revisit the concept of our events and how we can best plan and market for those events, and of course, succession planning, marketing and public relations. We're still obviously addressing social media programming, our brand reinforcement, media familiarization tours, our video promotion, professional photography, et cetera, et cetera. So, we continue to tell the Yountville story as best we can and support the business community. And I know you have a busy agenda tonight with two new businesses coming into town. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or have any of our PR or marketing people answer your questions.
Thanks very much, Cindy. Counsel, have any questions of the presenters? Vice Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. It's great stuff that's been done by the chamber, so I appreciate that. Just a quick question about the budget that was presented tonight?
The handout?
Yes. So, this is approved? Just, this is one that you guys-
It's a draft budget.
Okay. Only, I mean, I guess I would first of all commend you on taking the town's responsibility in total for the revenue for the, because we have a contract, from 40% down to 24%. That's heavily contingent upon this music festival.
Right.
Which, right now, is budgeted to lose $25,000 next year versus the 150 from this year. So, my only comment, I guess, rather than question, is just to be mindful because we're such, right now, we're 40% of what the chamber spends, and you're making it less relevant for the town to support it, which is outstanding. I think the residents of the community would say, "Great, these are funds that, in principle, we're not necessarily going to have to find as much going forward if this is really a hit." But just be cautious in your planning there because of the last year's experience.
Right. Absolutely. I understand completely. And we have budgeted to obviously repay the loan to the TID, and that's included in this budget. But that, this budget doesn't reflect the current account balances, which will put us in the positive.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good information.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the presentation and the video, beautiful video. And you did a great job of representing many of your board members and many of our business community, I noticed, some very familiar faces in that video. So, thank you very much. It'll represent us well. Moving on to the first of our two public hearings, RH Gallery. I think we will be starting with a staff report, but before we get there, I believe, Vice Mayor, did you have a disclosure?
If I can find it. I've consulted with the town attorney, and although I'm the chief financial officer for Cliff Lady Vineyards, I will choose to participate in this particular item as I have no inherent financial impact by whether or not this project is approved or not.
And before, I also have a disclosure, if there are any other, seeing none. This is a new disclosure for me, but you'll understand, I think, in a moment, that this is just a disclosure regarding a potential conflict of interest that, in my opinion, does not exist. But, "The Fair Political Practices Committee prohibits public officials from participating or influencing decisions in which one has a foreseeable material financial interest that is meaningfully different from that of the general public. Such a conflict would compel that official to recuse oneself from consideration of an application. To provide transparency related to this wine business permit application, my wife, Robin, is employed by the Good Life Wine Collective, a wine group that owns three business, three wine businesses, including Jessup Cellars, which has a tasting room at the north end of Yountville. Her position is industry outreach and marketing, meaning she contacts industry partners to attract visitors to the Good Life Wine Collective brands. After receiving legal advice from our town attorney, I have determined I have no reasonably foreseeable expectation of a material financial benefit or interest related to my wife's employment. Her job has no bearing on my consideration of this application. Therefore, I will participate in this application request." So, that's the legal ease that we now have taken care of. And with that, I'll entertain our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. The application you have before you tonight is for consideration of a master development plan, design review, and a use permit for RH Gallery, which is located on Washington Street in the Old Town Commercial District. The subject parcel is approximately 23,000 square foot. It's currently vacant, but was historically developed as a restaurant, Frankie, Johnny, and Luigi's, too, and also as PJ Steakhouse. That building has been destroyed. And this project site is between Maison Rie, which is owned by RH Gallery, and the North Block Hotel. The site is situated across Washington Street from Jessup Cellars and Stewart Cellars that is currently under construction. The proposed project is comprised of the construction of three new structures arranged around a large courtyard, with the driveway on the north side of the parcel and the parking lot in the rear. The front building is situated parallel to Washington Street, and the two rear buildings are oriented perpendicular to it. The zoning and design review board considered the design review for this project at their meeting of April 14th, and revisions have been made to the project based upon the comments the applicant received. I will summarize those later in the staff report. I'm going to allow the applicant's presentation to cover the majority of the programming of the space during their portion of the presentation, so we're not duplicative. However, briefly, RH Gallery is not a conventional restoration hardware store that you would see in a mall. It is constructed as a curated wine and design center that features art, antiques, and distinctive home furnishings for both the home and the garden. The proposed project includes a limited food service in the building fronting Washington Street. RH is pursuing a Type 41 ABC license so that food and beverage may be enjoyed throughout the complex. The total square footage of the buildings is approximately 5,000 square feet. The building surrounds a courtyard of 4,600 square feet. There's a basement that's included under the two rear structures and include a galley kitchen of approximately 236 square feet. As I stated earlier, RH has purchased Maison Rie and proposes to operate both sites in a complimentary way. The two sites will be connected by way of a walkway oriented towards the courtyard located between the front, the building which fronts Washington Street and the two rear structures on the RH site. There are changes that are proposed on the Maison Rie site that will help to balance the complimentary operation of the sites. However, and that's not before you this evening for consideration, a separate design review and permit process will be undertaken at a later date. And if you see some of the drawings that you've been presented, you will see some of the changes, but those aren't included in your consideration this evening. Staff for each property will be housed in their respective complexes, and they both complement each other aesthetically but house different programs. The new gallery space focuses on art, antiques, and home design and self-service food sales as defined by our Town of Yountville limited service definition. Maison Rie will maintain wine tasting and wine sales with a limited food offering consistent with its existing use permits. Both sites are committed to operate under their own ABC licenses. If allowed under the permits, RH would like to be able to allow bottles purchased at Maison Rie to be consumed at the gallery. However, if that is not allowed by the ABC, then they won't pursue that. Parking at the existing Maison Rie lot will be reconfigured to allow a pedestrian walkway across Burgundy Way and into the new RH complex. The buildings have been designed around a common theme and feature custom plaster with stone accents complimentary to the historic Maison Rie building to the south, and also include metal, glass, and wood elements. The gallery buildings incorporate steel and glass doors with horizontal gabled board siding within the roof pitch and above the exterior walls. There's a stone fireplace on the north side of the courtyard that's gas-powered and will be visible from Maison Rie. Many of the doors are constructed in accordion panels so that the building can be opened for direct views and access to the courtyard from the pedestrian sidewalk. Transom window elements are included above the accordion doors along Washington Street. Metal trellis with textured glass panels will span the area between the entrance of Washington Street and the front of Building One. The main roof lines of all the buildings will feature gable-form bronze-colored standing seam metal roofs with roof pitches of 5 to 12. Building One houses the limited-service restaurant as well as gallery space, with the two rear buildings set up as design showrooms to allow wandering in and out of the spaces to the central courtyard. As I mentioned previously, several site open spaces are proposed, including the central and west courtyards. And the proposed open space, the site open space totals 20%, which meets the Towns of Yountville's requirements. Courtyard materials include stabilized decomposed granite, which meets ADA standards, and blue stone pavers. The gallery that's set along Washington Street is set back 13 feet from the front property line. The north side setback is 15 feet to the property line. Building Three is set back 18 feet from the north property line, and Building Two abuts the Maison Rie property line. A 12-foot-wide, one-way driveway from Washington Street is proposed just west of the right-of-way and adjacent to the sidewalk. A freestanding RH parking sign is proposed adjacent to the driveway entrance. Pedestrian access from the parking lot will be via a wood-gated rear entrance to the central courtyard that offers access to all of the buildings. The project includes a one-way exit gate from the Burgundy subdivision along the rear of Maison Rie. The RH parking lot abuts this residential community. Currently, delivery trucks to Maison Rie have the potential to disturb the homes located behind the building and adjacent to the RH site. For that reason, the applicant has proposed to construct and maintain entirely on the Maison Rie site, a one-way gate, exit gate, to prevent wrong-way entry into the subdivision and protect their privacy. The drought-tolerant landscaping plan is in keeping with the architectural style of the proposed buildings. The landscape palette will be primarily classically Mediterranean. Interior courtyard trees are also planned to be olive trees and climbing vines such as creeping fig and Boston ivy are planned to be used on the buildings and fences. The project requires onsite biofiltration of stormwater via bio-retention areas, and those will be located at the northeast and southwest corners of the site. Plant selections for these areas will be native and/or riparian subspecies such as fescue, junkus, elderberry, and beauty berry. The irrigation system supplied by town water will be all subsurface, or surface drip irrigation controlled by a weather-smart controller. There are a total of two 6-foot diameter sycamore trees that will be removed on-site and replaced with a total of approximately 30 trees in the rear parking lot area, eight in the central courtyard, and two in the front courtyard areas. The fencing plan shows an 8-foot slum stone block wall along the site's southern property line to protect the adjacent Burgundy Commons residential area. A short green fence or hedge along the 2-foot driveway planting area is proposed. The balance of the North Block Hotel site will be unfenced, and the Caltrans fence on the rear of the property will be unaltered. The lighting plan that's included in the application includes a comprehensive plan for building, site, landscape, and parking lot lighting. All buildings and parking lot lighting will feature full cutoff design. The site and landscaping lighting is primarily low-level LED lighting. There are two 5-foot, 6-inch pole-mounted sconces on the directional signage at the driveway. The applicant proposes to install five 10-foot-high poles with dual fixtures in the parking Also included, the application for your consideration this evening, is a signage plan. The signage is very understated in the plans before you. There are a total of eight signs on-site. Six are located along the front of the project, which are regulated by our sign ordinance. One is a metal sign, which is the directional parking sign. Four are small stone plaques, one on each side of the main entrance, and two are on the stone pilasters on the parking entrance. There is also a halo-lighted RH above the main entrance doorway. Refuse and recycling is proposed to be supplied by a joint-use area located on the North Block Hotel site at the rear of the parking lot structure. New frontage improvements are proposed. The existing asphalt sidewalk will be replaced by a curb gutter and 7-foot sidewalk along the project front edge. Two street trees will also be planted. Ten and a half hours of the gallery operation will be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The East Gallery will be open at 8:00 AM for breakfast, and the North and South Galleries will open at 10:00 AM. All of the buildings will close at 9:00 PM. In addition to the two or three food service employees that will staff the East Gallery, approximately eight to 10 gallery leaders, designers, and sales associates will staff the complex during the open hours in seven-to-eight-hour shifts. All transactions made in the new gallery will be made from discreet stationary point-of-sale cabinet or a sales associate iPad. All cash-and-carry sales, including furnishings, decor, food and beverage, will be- food and beverage, will be taxed locally. All sales shipped out of state will be taxed based upon the customer's delivery destination. RH intends to hold up to six special events per year, which will extend past the nine PM closure. RH typically has a grand opening, which is much larger than their typical special events. Staff proposes to limit those large special events to no more than two per year that do not exceed the fire marshal's occupancy limits for the buildings, with the balance of the four remaining events not to exceed one hundred persons. The events will be conditioned to end prior to eleven PM, given the proximity to the Burgundy Commons residential neighborhood as well as to the North Block Hotel. During those special events, which will be individually monitored, RH would provide valet parking in order to manage attendee vehicles so that the impact to residential neighborhoods in proximity would not be impacted. The zoning design review board for the Town of Yountville considered the design review application at their meeting of April fourteenth. The focus of their discussion was on site design and layout, building design, landscape, and hardscapes of the project. The ZDRB was particularly asked for input on the exceptions being requested for height, setbacks, and FAR, which can be granted by the Town Council through the master development plan process. In addition, the applicant requested some feedback from the ZDRB about the option of adding a glass-covered trellis between Buildings Two and Three from the west courtyard to the central courtyard in order to provide a largely covered corridor in inclement weather. The ZDRB expressed concern with the height and setbacks of the project, but was overall impressed with the design and the use of materials for the buildings. Other issues raised concerned the photometric study, the height of the pilasters on either side of the driveway, and a number of minor items that staff has addressed since the ZDRB consideration of the project. The next section of the report covers the applicant revisions to the plans since the ZDRB meeting. The buildings have been reduced in height from twenty-four feet to twenty-two and a half feet. Building One, which fronts onto Washington Street, has been reduced in width from thirty feet to twenty-nine in order to increase the setback to thirteen feet. The building footprint has been reduced from roughly fifty-six hundred square feet to five thousand square feet. The site has been raised approximately six inches in order to provide a more open feeling to pedestrians and visually align the front patio of the building with the street. The sidewalk was widened to seven feet along the project frontage, and the applicant has agreed also to widen the sidewalk along the Maison Marie site to improve the pedestrian orientation of both properties. A revised parking management plans has been provided, which is more suitable to the shifts proposed by the applicant. The driveway pilasters have been reduced in height to six feet, and the parking font size on the directional signings has been increased to improve wayfinding for vehicles. A revised photometric study, which meets the Town standards, has also been provided. The subject property is located in Old Town Commercial Zoning District. The district is intended to reflect the period of Yountville's commercial beginnings from eighteen seventy to nineteen twenty, and in doing so, create a commercial district that's separate and distinct from two other commercial zoning districts. One of the most important aspects of assuring that the proposed project is compatible and reflective of Yountville's commercial beginnings is associated with the project's impact to the historic Maison Rebuilding next door. The structures have been carefully designed to be complimentary to the historic Maison Rebuilding. The Page and Turnbull was commissioned to prepare a report, and that's included in the ZDRB packet, and it's dated March twenty-fourth. It studied the impacts of the proposed project on the historic structure. The, I guess it's Robinneau House, is listed in the National Register of Historic Places as an excellent example of the use of local Napa Valley stone materials by an Italian immigrant in the town. The house stands apart from the other two stone buildings in Yountville, the French Laundry Building and the Magnolia Hotel, in terms of design and stone construction, and fits into the overall Napa County context of stone buildings being utilitarian, craftsmen, designed commercial stone buildings, and that they retain a high degree of integrity, they have simple design, and they have straightforward execution. While the new complex on the RH site is another change to the historic setting, ultimately the historic significance of the Maison Rebuilding will be able to maintain its integrity, to continue to represent its significance, and will maintain its eligibility to be included in that national record, register, I'm sorry. In the compatibility analysis in the report, standard nine of the Secretary of Interior Standards Rehabilitation states the new work shall be differentiated from the old and will be compatible with the historic materials, features, size, scale, and proportion, and massing to protect the integrity of the property and its environment. Page and Turnbull's report determined that the proposed project will not destroy any historic materials, features, or spatial relationships that characterize the Maison Rebuilding. The size, scale, proportion, and massing of the proposed project is complimentary to Maison Marie. Design elements that should be used in setting the historic building from the new construction include standing seam metal roof, gable roofs with a form that's more complex than that of the historic building, large openings that indicate the building is contemporary and uses contemporary materials and opening mechanisms, such as multi-fold doors, the centered arched openings, which do not occur on the adjacent historic building, and the landscape design will also read as very contemporary, use of the plaster cladding, which is different than the stone on the historic structure. In conclusion, Page and Turnbull found that the proposed project is sensitive to the character-defining historic features of the historic building, and construction of the new buildings will not affect the overall integrity of the structure. Section eighteen forty dash point zero-five-zero of the municipal code has established standards for design of structures in the Old Town Commercial District to preserve the building and site layouts typical of this period and to avoid development of an auto-oriented commercial strip. New development should be street-oriented and configured in multiple small pedestrian-oriented buildings. It's also the intent of the classification to promote interesting, attractive environment for pedestrians and to enhance the interface between the commercial uses and the street. Building massing, scale, and size shall be reflective of structures dating from Yountville's early development period and shall be compatible with the established north Washington Street area. Buildings' pedestrian entrances should be located on Washington Street. In addition, facades should be articulated and have projecting elements with structures that are visually transparent in order to promote connectivity between the street and pedestrians. The following specific design standards apply to commercial projects in the OTC. The project is in conformance with the design ordinance standards that require the use of consistent materials and designs on buildings, exterior finish materials that are integral to the building construction, and the use of natural building finish materials, and doors and windows that are compatible with the overall building design. There are several ways that the project can achieve a pedestrian-oriented design. These include articulating features using windows on a substantial portion of the facade, including areas of outdoor activity, minimizing areas of street-level frontage that are opaque and include pedestrian-oriented design elements and amenities such as seating, services, awnings, arcades, plazas, art, and alternate paving materials. Design features for this project include double set of large accordion panel doors on the front facing elevations with a large transparent glass door in the center of the building frontage under a high archway. The accordion doors will offer views into the space into the central corridors, whether they're opened or closed. The large opening into the central courtyard, which is linked to Maison Marie by a blue stone walkway. The metal trellis with textured glass awning along the building frontage, as well as the archway feature and dormer roof elements, create a heavily articulated facade. Tables and chairs are proposed for the front courtyard, visible from the new seven-foot public sidewalk. All of these measures are effective in giving the property a strong pedestrian orientation and great transparency, which in turn reduce the overall apparent massing of the project. In the Old Town Commercial Zone District, new construction shall consist of multiple small buildings rather than one large building, and no single building shall exceed twenty-five hundred square feet in size. In this case, the buildings are provided as three separate structures in order to meet the requirement. Similar treatment has been given to the North Block Hotel, Washington Square, and Stewart Cellars, where several individual buildings line the street and surround central courtyards. The design ordinance also requires that all new construction and expansion of existing structures shall install and maintain pedestrian pathways along Washington Street in accordance with the Town Bicycle and Pedestrian Pathway Master Plan. Pedestrian pathways shall be interrupted with minimal number of widths of driveways. The project meets a standard by construction of the seven-foot sidewalk along the frontage of the project, which then completes the westerly side of the pedestrian path for the north Washington area. Although Washington Street is not included on the town's bikeway route plan, the street is used by bicyclists, and the width and speed allows them to share the roads with the automobiles safely. The project also includes construction of a pedestrian crosswalk across Washington Street at Pedronee and provides for bicycle racks on the property. As I stated earlier, the project also meets the twenty percent open space requirement of the OTC. The applicant has included a thoughtful drought tolerant landscaping plan, and the eight-foot fencing at the Burgundy Commons residential area will protect the neighborhood from noise associated with the operation of the site. Section seventeen point one-two-eight zero-five-zero of the municipal code covers the standards adopted to provide lighting standards. The proposed lighting plan conforms to the town requirements. The design ordinance requires that signage shall be oriented and scaled to the pedestrian. The application for the master sign plan meets these requirements. The trash enclosure is currently shared with North Block Hotel in the rear of the parking lot. The current structure will be the general storage, is currently used as general storage for Maison Marie and the North Block Hotel. It appears that extensive modifications will be necessary to accommodate the refuse storage for all three of the buildings unless Maison Marie decides to reestablish the refuge on their own site. As a condition of approval and a mitigation measure to the environmental document, staff has included the requirement of development of a refuse and recycling plan to be provided prior to building permit issuance for the construction of the gallery. W-Trans prepared a report dated April seventh. It's included in the ZDRB packet, which determined that approximately a hundred and sixty trip-ins will be generated from the project per day, with six trips during the AM peak hour and fourteen during the PM peak hour. This is below the threshold requiring a specific traffic study. In addition, the Town of Yountville recently completed an update to the circulation element, which showed that even with build-out conditions, the road network will operate at acceptable levels of service. The W-Trans analysis determined that under the town zoning ordinance, a total of twenty-seven on-site parking places were required. We also had them analyze parking demand based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Edition Standards, which, that analysis showed that twenty-nine spaces were required for the project. The applicant is proposing the construction of approximately, a total of thirty parking places, twenty-five regular and compact spaces, one disabled access space, and four tandem spaces that will be used in conjunction with some of the regular places for the employees. The W-Trans report identified a proposed parking management plan that operates a tandem parking spaces such that they can be used cooperatively with the multiple shifts of employees. The plan has been revised since the ZDRB meeting, and we feel that it's a very workable plan that will serve as a model to other opportunities for tandem parking by employees within the town. A mitigation measure requires that the applicant participate in a parking management program that will include monitoring and reporting requirements, and that they would pay the fees associated with operating that program. The parking is located behind the buildings in the rear of the lot, and the proposed lot satisfies the parking standards. The applicant has discussed with the Burgundy Commons homeowners the construction and maintenance at their own expense of the gate. While not unanimously in agreement, the fact that they will be consulted by the Town of Yountville as to the design and location as a condition of approval was appreciated. The town establishes standards for height, FAR, and setbacks, in part to control apparent massing of projects on-site and to provide for a visually appealing project. As such, these standards are somewhat interrelated and need to be considered together and in conjunction with the use of building materials for the project as well. The purpose of the next section of my report discusses the typical town standards and provide analysis of the issues associated with massing. And as I stated earlier, the master development plan process does allow for exceptions to the standards. In terms of building height, one-story buildings shall not exceed fifteen feet from the plate, to the plate height or an overall height of twenty feet. Two-story buildings shall not exceed twenty-two feet to the plate height or an overall height of thirty feet. There shall be a combination of different building heights with an emphasis on one-story buildings. All three structures are one-story buildings with a fourteen-foot, two-inch top plate height and an overall height of twenty-two point five feet. The site slopes downward from the north block site to Maison Marie approximately five feet. The applicant is proposing to raise the site six feet, six inches, I'm sorry, to improve its connection with the street and to improve site drainage. Currently ADA access along the street, however, is, will be along the street. However, the applicant is also reviewing the Maison Reconnection to improve ADA access between the two sites. Based upon some of the changes made by the applicant since the story poles were placed prior to the ZDRB meeting, the actual heights of the ridge lines have been reduced approximately twelve inches from the existing pole height. So if you go out and look at the story poles, the buildings now won't exceed, they'll be actually one foot lower than the top of those poles. The Maison Restructure is twenty-five point five feet in height, and elements of the North Block Hotel reach thirty-three point two feet. Redwood, which joins the project site, is approximately twenty feet in height. On the screen, we provided kind of a context of the west side of Washington Street between the proposed project in the center and the two buildings that surround it. One of the things that we often forget when a building is torn down is how large the building was that was on the site, and included in your staff report is a picture of the old Johnny and Luigi's building, which was two feet, or it was twenty-five feet in height, immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. And if you look at that picture, there was no connection to Washington Street, and the patio actually came right to the back of the sidewalk. So in comparison to what was previously developed on the site, the proposed project is vastly superior in its orientation and size. The definition of commercial FAR in the zoning ordinance is the sum of the gross area of the enclosed floors of a building, measured from the center line of the existing wall or bottom plate, from the center line to the party wall separating such buildings. Interior portions of buildings with a minimum of a hundred square feet of open area and sixteen feet of clear open space from the floor to the ceiling are regarded as an assumed second floor to be included in the floor area calculations. The maximum permitted FAR is typically twenty-five percent. The proposed project is twenty-two percent if the buildings were to be considered one-story. However, the ceiling peaks in Building One, which front Washington Street, are twenty feet, three inches to the interior ridge level. Buildings Two and Three have an eighteen-foot interior ridge line height. Using the definition in the zoning ordinance, the buildings would be considered two-story for FAR purposes. for FAR purposes. The zoning ordinance also provides a minimum front yard setback for buildings of buildings over 18 feet in height as being 20 feet. Side and rear yard setbacks are determined during the master development plan process. Exceptions to minimum standards may be granted as part of a master -- approved master development plan. The applicant is requesting a 14-foot front yard setback from the building along Washington Street in order to align visually with the Maison Marie facade and the North Block Hotel. There's precedent for this being granted. The Stewart Cellars project, as well as Heston Tasting Room on Washington Street, received approval by the town council for front yard setbacks of 10 feet and 15 feet and 12 feet respectively. One of the reasons for allowing reduced setbacks on those projects was the desire to create a pedestrian-oriented environment with the building set as close to the street as was reasonable. Since the sidewalk on Heston is located -- I'm sorry. Since the sidewalk on Heston is located actually on the property, rather than the right-of-way, the actual setback from the building to the back of sidewalk is just seven feet. The setback on Maison Marie is 4.8 feet. The setback on the North Block Hotel is 20 feet. However, again, the sidewalk has been constructed entirely on private property because of the loading zone that was constructed. Based upon the project plans, the RH building which fronts Washington Street will visually align with both of these abutting properties. In this case, RH Gallery proposes to construct a seven-foot wide sidewalk which would be located within the right-of-way, along with a two-foot area for landscape plantings, meaning the distance between the face of curb and the buildings is 20 feet. On the Stewart Cellars project, that dimension is 17 feet, and on Heston it is 12 feet. As mentioned prior, the historic development of the site was where the patio extended actually directly to the sidewalk. The proposed side yard setback from the North Block Hotel varies, but is approximately 18 feet at its narrowest points. This provides adequate area for landscaping associated with the one-way driveway access. The south sides of Building 1 and 2 abut the Maison Marie site. Because the sites are operated complementary, staff sees no problem with the proposed zero setback, which can be approved as part of the master development plan process. The building will need to be constructed to meet one-hour fire ratings along that side of the building, and because the applicant is proposing glass windows, the building code requires inclusion of a drainage water system along the openings, in addition to the fire sprinklers that would be provided inside. Additionally, since a 12-foot wide access easement is located along the northern boundary of the Maison Marie site that is owned by Burgundy Commons, as a required egress from their subdivision, that area would never be built on, and meaning that the adequate separation from adjacent structures is unlikely an issue. Section 17.148040 of the master plan development portion of the zoning ordinance allows for exception to the strict standards and may be approved by the town council as part of a preliminary or final master development plan with regards to the following provision: Minimum yards and setbacks, maximum heights of buildings, walls and fences, minimum and maximum lot size, maximum floor ratios, minimum number of parking spaces, location, design standards related to the relation of buildings to streets, minimum open space, and signage. In approving the exemptions, the town council finds that they -- shall find that they are necessary to further the goals and purposes of the zoning and design standards. The zoning ordinance has two goals which staff believes justify the consideration of the adjustments and the exceptions to the height exceedance in the FAR calculations as well as the setbacks. The ordinance requires that the proposed structures be compatible with the established North Washington Street area. The site, as well as both the northerly and southerly adjacent sites, slope approximately five feet, and based upon the renderings of the height context, the staff believes that the height exceedance for one-story buildings is justified. In addition, the ordinance requires that street-facing structure have a substantial transparency incorporated into the design. However, RH has made the street-facing East Gallery nearly entirely transparent, which will also reduce the apparent massing of the building. Given that the development is clustered into three buildings, and there is significant transparency on the front building, and that there is a large parking lot located behind the structures, as well as the heights of Maison Marie and North Block, staff feels that the goals and policies included in the OTC Zone District stressing compatibility with surrounding structures are paramount. Staff will propose as a condition of approval that no development of a second-story conditioned space be allowed, as this would impact other site characteristics, including parking. While FAR and building size are closely related, the zoning ordinance is explicit that assumed second floors count only towards the FAR. On the other hand, maximum building size limits are intended to regulate the size and massing of structures, and the high ceiling -- the very high ceilings definitely contribute to the building's size and massing. The fact that the parcel is large, is arranged in a campus-like environment, and that there is significant amount of open space help to reduce the overall feeling of massing. The Old Town Commercial -- the Old Town Commercial District also allows for limited-service restaurants to be operated with the granting of a use permit by the town council. Section 17.08010 of the municipal code defined a limited-service restaurant as a business where food is regularly prepared onsite and available to customers for consumption both on and off the premises. Customers predominantly order and receive the food from a walk-up counter or ordering window. That food is paid for at the time the food is ordered. Food is typically served in disposable containers and/or packaged for transportation off-site, and the establishment may possess a Type 41 license from the ABC. Therefore, if the council grants the use permit as part of this current application, the applicant will be in compliance with the rules associated with the limited restaurant The conditions of approval also require the applicant to pay impact fees associated with mitigation of the impacts on the Town of Yountville facilities, based upon the fees adopted as part of the master fee schedule in place at the time of building permit issuance. The current fees on the 14-15 schedule would require that the developer pay $278,000 in impact fees. So in conclusion, thank you very much. The proposed project on the subject site represents a very positive change to the North Washington Street neighborhood. Staff finds that the project has been well-considered, and the building design and layout in many of the respects are in compliance with the zoning and design standards. The applicant has agreed to the conditions of approvals and to the changes recommended by both the ZDRB and staff as a part of this report. Again, just to summarize, the exceptions to the design ordinance standards are: the exception of the maximum over height -- overall height of a one-story building of 20 feet to allow a height of 22 feet; exception for FAR as a result of the height of the one-story building; and exception to the minimum front yard setback of 20 feet to allow setback of 13 feet, as well as to the zero lot line on the south side of the property. An initial study of the environmental impacts associated with the project has been completed, and a mitigation monitoring plan has been provided to the council as part of the recommended approvals. I have several minor changes that need to be made into the approval resolution, some typos. I did pass out new copies of the resolution for the council. They're minor in nature. So with that, we would recommend that you now hear from the applicant, that then you open the public hearing and discuss the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We're going to ask you questions first.
Okay.
So thank you very much for that thorough report. We will start with questions from the council. Who would like to start? Councilmember Dornbecker, would you like to begin?
Oh, thank you. I was trying -- I was looking for the button. I was wondering, in the plan that you have for when there is an event and there's valet parking, where -- is there a plan for where those cars will be parked?
At this point, we haven't gotten into those details with the applicant. Each -- I know that we currently, when other winery or wine tasting rooms have events, we actually manage those separately, and that is part of a plan that's presented each and every time an event is held.
I see.
So that would have to be identified before we would grant a permit for a special event. And so we would be looking at how that might best be accommodated.
All right. And then, in terms of serving food in the gallery, is it the front gallery that they're planning to serve food?
The counter is actually in the front gallery. As I understand it, and the applicant can definitely expand on this during their presentation, they would actually allow -- I don't think I would, but they would allow people to actually take their food and look at some of the furniture as well, and even sit out in the courtyard on some of the furniture that they will have that's being displayed and actually can be purchased. So that is part of their concept, and it works well for them, and so that food would be allowed to be on the rest of the site.
Have they indicated whether or not the disposable containers that they plan to use will be biodegradable?
I believe that's what we discussed, but it's been several months since we were talking about those details, so I'll ask the applicant to discuss that.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
I don't see any other buttons pushed here, but I'm guessing that there might be more questions. All right, who's first? Councilmember Durham.
So we might be last.
Well, you push the button.
Well, I didn't mean to so quick. Thank you. I'm just -- when you said "technology," I thought it was Spotify and Candy Crush. So, quick question. The crosswalk?
Yes.
What's -- that's been asked by the town to -- for the project, put that in?
Yes, and if you see the -- because you have the luxury of having seen the conditions of approvals when you were on the ZDRB, but we have revised that condition of approval that some modifications would probably be made to that landscape area in order to provide the crosswalk across to the Jessup Sellers site. And so it's just basically a condition that says it would be done in -- by approval by the town engineer or the public works director. I can't remember which one we have.
So is that based on the circulation element that was done recently, or just the fact?
I think Steve would like to talk about that.
Yes. One of the observations that came out of the circulation element is the appropriate continuation of the pedestrian crosswalks. For example, we're adding a similar crosswalk where Vandeleer Park comes out at Weber as part of the new. And the intent here is, the town's plan document creates that Washington is the throughway connecting for our accessible path system through the north and south. As you know, in the Old Town area, the policy is that there's no sidewalk in the Old Town. So what we're attempting to do is have a marked crosswalk where Pedronee becomes the southern point of Noyo, and it welcomes the crowd that is walking north to go on both sides of the street. And then there's a marked crosswalk in the same treatment that is historically used in the town at the intersection of Washington and Madison. So the intent is to try to bring that connection and continuity to the crosswalk configuration. So that's the purpose behind it. There's also science that says that the safest pedestrian crossing is the person that looks where they're going regardless of where they're walking. So I won't -- but part of our challenge is, how do we create that dual connection where one part of Noyo will have sidewalks on both sides, but that secondary component will not? So that -- there is a logic to the intent of what the town is doing, and it is consistent with the recommendations of the circulation plan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I -- first, I'd like to start by asking about trash. I sit on the trash board, so I have to ask trash questions. But so, right now, I'm not very clear about the proposal. Is there a dumpster in the back of Maison Marie, and they might use that? I mean, if there's a restaurant, they're going to have to deal with the food waste. Is this a California state law? Can you tell me a little bit about what that -- how that really is going to work?
I'm glad you like trash, because I've been called the trash queen before. I used to run a lot of landfills, and when I go on vacation, I still go and look at landfills. So that is a subject that's near and dear to my heart. Currently, the Maison Marie garbage area was converted to additional parking, and because RH owned the site adjacent, they've been storing the refuse from Maison Marie on the RH site. Right now, that's how it's being done. If you go out and look at the site, there are a lot of toters along the back fence behind kind of a gate. And if you look into the building that is actually on North Block Hotel property, that is the building that is proposed to be a joint refuse collection center for the RH Gallery and also for North Block. It's unincluded now.
Most specifically, I'm very concerned about toters. I don't want 50 toters lining up, you know, for a day and a half.
And I agree. That's the plan right now. Included as a condition of approval and a mitigation measure is that they have to provide a satisfactory trash management plan to us. That would include the use of dumpsters and not toters. Whether or not Maison Marie wants to reestablish their refuse site on their own property will all be addressed as part of that plan. I think that that is something that can definitely -- that building can be redesigned to provide enough space for all three, but it's going to take some -- it's going to take some reconfiguring of that building. There's currently a dividing wall between the two, and it's all going to be serviced from the North Block site. So it's definitely going to be something that they're going to have to provide us a plan, but I think it's definitely something that is -- would be easy to design.
Right. If I could just to add a little context for the council and the public, the prior property owner, when the VITA development and the approvals, and then property owner of North Block entered into a shared use, because there's some overlap of their property. And you'll note that the property lines don't necessarily line up. So they entered into and recorded an agreement that allows for a little bit of this on this side, a little bit of that on that side, and then the shared-use trash enclosure. So I do agree with the condition, because the trash enclosure in its current configuration and how it's been used will not work. But -- so everybody understands, this is somewhat unique, but the -- it goes back a number of years to a previous agreed effort where we're trying to get -- the goal the town has is to consolidate some of these, make them a better shared purpose, and this also started with a shared-use access driveway entry. So the private property owners had already agreed to do that previously to allow them to maximize some of the development footprint. So that's a carryover that the two property owners had brought into the current site plan. So just a little context for you on that.
So we don't really have anything to look at right now, is the bottom line?
No, but I think it's definitely -- I mean, in all of the experience I have in reviewing the amount of material that's there, I've been going over there and looking in their bins and seeing how often they're picked up and all that. I think it's definitely something that can fit within the footprint that they're proposing.
We have a whole new 5,000 square feet of retail.
Right, right.
It's not what it -- it's not a few boxes from wine bottles anymore.
And, you know, it's probably going to require more frequent pickup as well, but I think it will all fit in that area.
As long as that truck can get back there, we can talk about that. Also, so you said that they want to allow wine purchased at Maison Marie to be taken around the property. Are they -- how they plan on controlling that? Will they let anybody just bring a bottle of wine in, start popping it open, and drinking it everywhere?
I'll let the applicant speak about how they're going to control that. But I do appreciate that everyone needs to be mindful, that they have an ultimate power beyond the Town of Yountville to also satisfy, and that would be the ABC, and they strictly can't do anything that the ABC doesn't allow them to do, and they will have to conform with them as well as our requirements.
So is the courtyard planned to be cordoned off, or is it free-flowing? You can go from any building to any building, you know, if this?
They would have to revive -- you know, they would have to operate under whatever rules the ABC provided for them for the special events or for the regular operation. If that included that the wine had to be only served in the East Gallery, then that would be all they could do. And I think the -- in discussions, and I appreciate you letting us know about these questions ahead of time, you did a whole lot of work. ahead of time, you did a whole lot of work, thank you very much, on this whole issue. We have discussed it with the applicant and they're totally on board with operating under the ABC requirements, whatever those are. This is their intent, they would like to be able to do these things, but if they're not allowed to under their ABC license, they're fully committed to building the project with, without those attributes.
And then, I do have more questions for the applicant, but, so, if we do approve this limited service restaurant in part of Building One, let's just say, you know, down the line, many, many years, is that now a conditioned use that anybody could come in and open up that part, say they decide to go out of business and everyone go on vacation or whatever? Is that gonna be a conditioned use that that will always be able to be at least a limited service restaurant?
We've actually had some very interesting discussions with our new town attorney about, about use permits, and I think maybe he might be able to jump in and talk a little bit about these.
I think in general, the permit runs with the land.
Mike, make sure, is it on? I'm not sure if it's on.
You might need a button.
Just pull it closer.
There we go.
I also have problems with technology.
All right.
I think that, off the top of my head, I think that that's right, that the permit would run with the land and it's part of the property itself. So if it changed hands, it would bind and also authorize future uses in the same way.
Now, if they came in to modify the, you know, the operation to provide it somewhere else, then that's a, that's a use permit amendment that is regulated by the town and they have to come back for that amendment.
So, when you say land, I'm gonna nail you down, there's three buildings. Can you further describe what you mean by land?
The parcel.
The whole parcel. So, that any place in that parcel, from your interpretation, could be a limited service restaurant in the future?
Well, if the, if the permit says that the use might be confined to one portion of the parcel, to Building One, then that same restriction, the same allowance and restriction would apply going forward. So, yeah, the permit runs with the land, so the purchaser of the whole land would have the benefit, but also all the restrictions. So if it's restricted to Building One, it'll always be restricted to Building One.
So right now, that's not in our resolution?
That's not in your resolution. It would allow them to take the food throughout the gallery as the applicant proposed.
But if we wanted to take that action to limit it, just for future?
You could certainly revise the condition of approval for that.
For that, okay. And would the same apply for the alcohol, depending on whatever might get approved by ABC?
So that, as far as conditions go, yes. As far as the liquor license goes, no. As I understand it, and I'm no expert on ABC law, those are tied to individuals and business operations.
Okay, so just the food?
Yeah. I think the distinction really is conditions and authorizations granted by the town as opposed to some other licenses or authorizations from other agencies. But the town's authorizations and restrictions in the permit are subject to the rules I've just described.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Obviously, I think the bottle purchase and consumption items we'll hear about from the applicant. A question about hours of operation and just specifically, you know, a note here that it's 8:00 AM, which doesn't bother someone who gets up early like me, but 9:00 PM is the intended or the expected closing time. When does Maison Re close? Do we know what the hours of operation are?
Currently? Oh, I don't know.
Okay, so that's, that's just a question we'll determine when the applicant comes up. Thank you, Michael. But just in general, I would wonder if that's not inconsistent with, I mean, I know North Block and perhaps Redwood's open later and North Block's a hotel, but just curious about that. Are there retail operations like V Marketplace, their closing times like 7:00 PM? Is that right?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, since I don't have a lot of history here, but there may be different times that are set, yes.
Okay. With regards to the parking plan, because we know that parking is a local issue and it's even more local to this end of town, there's two to three people, I think in your report I read, that were being identified for food service?
Correct.
And potentially eight to nine design professionals?
Yes.
My words, not theirs, maybe?
Yes.
So that's like, on a big day, 12 people on 30 spaces?
If you, if you look, and I'm not sure where it is in the packet, is it in the new one? There's also in this new handout that was passed out just, yeah, page 19 of the new handout, is a copy of the, of the plan that staff has reviewed and we think is workable.
Okay, I'll review that.
Yeah, and if you see, there are actually hours of parking along with the shifts that show how, you know, some of the, some of the staff gets there early and some get there later and how the gallery leaders that are there the longest pull in first, because they're on one side, and then the service workers that are food oriented, that get there early in the mornings, park in first. And they leave the spot before the afternoon shifts come in. So we've got kind of a shift orientation to how that parking plan could work.
Okay.
And Nathan and I spent a pretty long period of time reviewing it and we think it's very workable.
Okay, it's like the jigsaw puzzle at RH.
Yeah, it is a, it is a jigsaw. That's great.
I'll catch up. Thank you so much. I don't think I had this document, but I'll entertain everyone with my antics. Question with regards to the drive aisle, because I know, I mean, I'm not a, I don't know anything out of the math, is that big enough for the fire department to get through there?
Yes.
So that's been reviewed?
It's been reviewed and the fire department turning ratios are provided, and that's part of the reason that we have the one-way access, they can, so they can make those turns.
Right. And I know, or I'm assuming the applicant will go into some great detail about loading and unloading of those large items that go into those kinds of stores?
And the hours that that's done and so forth, yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, today, is there actually a left turn lane in front of that?
No.
Particularly, there is, as you pull further up, or is, it's as you get to the door, it's a stop sign?
Yeah, I think so.
And was that ever a consideration with this particular project?
We don't believe that, the times of those deliveries are very early in the morning. We don't think that there is going to be a sufficient amount, and if you see the W-Trans report, they don't identify enough of left turns that would warrant putting that turn lane in, putting a turn lane in.
Okay. Okay, I think those are my questions for now.
So I have a list of questions that, Marlene, if they're not for you, then I'll just recommend that the presentation team maybe jot them down and identify them if you weren't already planning on it. Some of them will sound familiar. The bottle consumption issue, I understand ABC will have its own regulations. I don't know that we've ever had approval to go from one parcel to another, and that's what we'd be talking about here, correct?
Yeah, I'm, again, I'm not an expert on ABC rules. You know, I know that you can purchase a bottle and you can open it somewhere else on your own, but whether or not they're proposing that kind of an operation or not, I think we'll just have the applicant talk a little bit more about that.
I know that we had an extensive conversation with the Crease Ranch property, which is actually one single parcel but two buildings, and the restriction was the line of sight from the employees had to be maintained, which is why we prohibited alcohol up on the rooftop patio. So whether that applies here in terms of, if you sell it at Maison Marie and walk across to RH, is now the RH employee responsible for monitoring the consumption? So that would be one, one question. The gate, one-way gate by Burgundy Commons, I'm glad in the report it finally said it would be on the Maison Re property and it would be under the maintenance of RH slash Maison Re. But there's no explanation for the design of it, and my concern is, it's right up against the very back parking space, and knowing the size of vehicles, they barely fit in those parking spaces as they are. So it's almost more of a suggestion than a question about how, how we're gonna figure out what type of gate actually works, whether it's swinging in, swinging out. There's nowhere for it to roll from side to side, so it's gotta either swing in to Burgundy Commons or swing out and have the clearance to not be blocked by vehicles that are parked immediately adjacent to it.
Right.
So that, to me, sounds like it's a little bit more complicated than one might think, but again, that's for someone else to figure out. The special events of 100 people, I hear 100 people, I hear 50 cars, 50 vehicles, plus or minus a few, and we have 30 spaces on site, and you're saying that there's not gonna be any neighborhood impact? I don't see those numbers adding up. And I haven't even factored in Vice Mayor's comment about employees. So you're saying there's still going to be a parking mitigation plan that needs to be presented, but if we're, if we're being asked to approve special events and numbers of capacity, I'm a little wary of saying yes to something before we even know how the parking mitigation is being handled.
Right. You know, we could, Steve's really been, kind of has his pulse on the whole issue with parking. I know that they're talking about valets and whether that might be taking cars up to the park and then, you know, then running back down. I don't know if that's something that's possible, valets can do, but...
Well, anything's possible, but the reality is, is completely different.
And I wanna indicate, this is an evolving, based on the council's feedback. When we approve special events, they're not approved unless they have an accepted and verified parking management plan. So for example, some special events, including, I'll use the French Laundry, has occasionally had special events where they secure, for example, the school parking lot after hours and then they shuttle. So for the limited special events, we, we don't know when the dates and timing are going to be, so they're not approved though unless they can provide the parking management plan.
Okay, so staff will handle it?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say. And it's, it's consistent with how we do others. What I do wanna say though, that we have taken to heart, the council's intent is, we are working really diligently to show the community that we are trying to address employee parking and the fact that the applicants will no longer just be able to show and disperse all of the employees into the neighborhoods, we're making them account for significant, and you'll note that in that parking management plan, they were actually designated. This is a model that, based on, I will say, encouragement from the council and direction for us to do something different, you're going to see us be much more aggressive with all of our parking management plans, because the applicant does have control over its employees. And I think this is a great example where RH's team really worked with us and we actually got down to, how do they use the site? Who are the employees? So I'm just letting you know, this is a precursor, based on your interest, that you will see coming, not only here.
We've also seen other neighboring businesses put up chains to block their parking. So, you know, there are unintended consequences to some of this.
There are, but this is why I'm just sharing with you the cost and the registration and all those various things. We're taking, we're learning from those things and applying the council's direction.
Okay, thank you. Sidewalk in front of Maison Re.
Yes.
You said they're going to widen it, but you gave no description of what's gonna happen to that.
I'm sorry, it's currently, it's currently five feet wide and they are going to widen to seven.
So take out all the landscaping in between the patio?
They're gonna move the wall back, yes. There's a little wall there and a little, yeah, they'll be moving that back.
So it goes all the way to that wall, and so the landscaping in between goes away?
Correct. Well, I mean, hopefully they'll provide some additional landscaping still on the patio there, or move everything back. That would be our intent. Again, that's something that we would be reviewing when Maison Re comes in for some changes.
Why does it matter when Maison Re comes in for changes if we're being, again, if we're being asked to say yes to a seven-foot sidewalk?
And I misspoke. I think, I think we actually have as a condition of approval that they include the widening on Maison Re, and I'll have to look at the resolution while we're, while the applicant's talking, just to make sure, but you're right, I may have included that. I was going back and forth during the preparation of the condition, so it might be on there.
Okay, I remember it being a part of this.
It might, it might, it might have been, it was in and out, it was in and out, so...
Okay, all right. I can't think of any other parcel in town that has ingress only onto its site. We have singles, single driveways, but they're two-way. So you're completely comfortable that people will drive in on Washington Street and find their way through the North Block R&amp;D parking lot, knowing to turn right to go back to Washington, because you can't turn left out of the north driveway and get onto Highway 29. So I can see a lot of people now going up to that exit by R&amp;D, turning right and spinning around in the middle of the Madison/Washington intersection.
Well, that's part of the reason, originally there was proposed to be a fence between North Block and RH, and we had them remove that so that there's still a visible connection so you can see that there's another driveway for you to be able to go out onto, on the North Block, back onto Washington Street, just immediately adjacent to the ingress.
But, and we all know it, that live here?
Yeah.
But you drive in, you park in the back parking lot, you go out that opening and you see a driveway and Madison ahead of you, you're gonna go straight that way, you know, frequently?
That's possible, yeah. Then they'd have to make a right-hand turn and then go and turn around.
And you're, so we're okay with that?
I think, I think it's, I think most people are gonna probably go right back out the North Block driveway immediately adjacent to the RH side. I think that would be most, and we could certainly address that with signage on the North Block side.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that there be some signage about Highway 29 access?
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
With an arrow, to add to the sign plan that we're being asked to approve tonight. Okay, just a couple more here. So the ADA accessibility is being addressed, the connection between Maison Re and RH?
Correct, to make sure that there is not, not enough of a slope in through there. Originally, maybe there was gonna be some steps. ADA access is provided on the sidewalk. However, the applicant wants to improve the access to make those two sites more complimentary and not require that disabled people go out to the street to go to RH. So I think they're addressing, they're trying to address that in the civil plans right now as we've been talking about them over the last several weeks.
Like if there is a grade that they could have a ramp type thing?
A rail or some, some sort of way to be able to provide that ADA access directly between the two sites.
Okay. You mentioned in your report, the furniture in the front patio would be for-sale furniture?
No, not as, it would be actually in the courtyard where they would have displays of outdoor furniture. As I understand it, and the applicant, correct me if I'm wrong, the tables in the front would not be, they would be, I think RH-owned tables, and I think they're just, you know, the normal kinds of tables that you would see, but I don't think it's for sale.
Okay, I may have misheard you.
No, I think it's, it's in the courtyard is where I was talking about.
So the interior of the, of the site?
Interior, yeah.
It's a, we've restricted...
Because otherwise, we would, yeah, otherwise we would have, we would not allow sale of materials in the front yard of a building, yeah.
That's where I was heading.
Yeah.
Okay, so you didn't mention anything about the basement. Are there any concerns about the basement? Hopefully they've talked to North Block folks and found out how high the water is and all that fun stuff, but is there no concern from the staff's perspective on the basement?
As, as we understand it, those are issues that are being addressed in the design of the structure.
Okay. Was there any discussion about, you mentioned very briefly the loading zone cutout in front of North Block and Redwood, and there's kind of a similar cutout for parking right across the street at Jessup Sellers. Was there any consideration for having that? Because I'll just mention, and it's kind of funny, we always give Frankie, Johnny and Luigi's the credit for being the previous restaurant, even though Mamanita's and Perignon Tea and PJ Steak, et cetera, et cetera. But regularly, cars stopped right in the middle of the street and unloaded people right there because there was nowhere for them to go. I think that was one of the reasons that it was encouraged to have the loading cutout at Redwood. Was there any consideration to having a cutout with either parking or loading access there?
I would have to say that I think it makes sense to have that kind of loading and unloading for a hotel, because you have hotel guests that pull in and, you know, they're gonna register, they don't know where they're gonna park, and they might have bags and that sort of thing. I think that makes sense for that, for that location. I'm not sure that the RH, and I think it also would make sense for a restaurant where you're, you know, gonna drop somebody off so they can get in line and get your reservation so you can get ahead of somebody else, and then you're gonna go park the car, because that's what my husband always does with me. But I think that the, the way that the RH site is operating as a, as a retail store, I don't think that's really something that is absolutely necessary. And what we're really trying to do is, is enhance the pedestrian orientation of the street, not necessarily trying to make it easy for cars, even though, of course, we do, we do that as well. So if we did, if we, if we did, for some reason, make that, you know, more of a loading zone and we shrink the width of the sidewalk, I think that would go against all the policies in the Old Town Commercial District about street orientation and pedestrian orientation.
So, I mean, I get it that you've prioritized aligning the buildings and the sidewalk, and that makes sense. I was just asking because we have talked many times about the parking concerns and it doesn't matter if there's signage for the parking lot, there will be people that stop in the middle of that street and unload passengers guaranteed. Let me just quickly scroll through, I know I had another note in here. I think it was on the very last, sorry, folks. So the, the exceptions you're asking for, the three exceptions would be the height of the front building... would be, the height of the front building would be one exception, the FAR, assuming the calculation is two-story calculation versus the one-story.
Right.
And the third is the front setback.
Correct.
With, you know, less than 20 feet.
Correct.
Those are the only three exceptions.
Those are the three exceptions, yes.
Okay.
And the findings are included in the resolution.
Okay, great. I think, I think those are all my questions of staff, so formally open the public hearing and invite our robust application team to come forward.
And by the way, I have to compliment the application team. They have been extremely communicative and easy to work with, and I really appreciate the responses that they gave to staff whenever we had a question.
Great, thank you. That's always good to hear. And welcome.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Gary Friedman. I'm the chairman and chief executive officer of RH Restoration Hardware. We're a locally-based company, at least locally, down in Marin County, where we have our headquarters. I'm also a resident here in Yountville. I've probably spent about 20% of my time over here on the crossroad at Fennel, and I'm, grew up in the little town of Sonoma, so if there's, if they knew I was here tonight, they'd be going, "Why are you a traitor?" But I went to Sonoma Valley High School and graduated in 1975, so I'm familiar with both valleys and spent a lot of my childhood here. Very excited to present our plans to you tonight and proposals, and Debbie, thanks for such a complete overview, that I don't think she missed anything and hit on every highlight. So, let me, let me spend a little time about what we thought we'd talk about. We spent a few minutes on who we are and what we are proposing, and I'll try not to be redundant with what you've already heard. But we try to summarize and simplify who we are. We say we're curators of inspired design and creators of inspiring spaces. And if you're familiar with the old Restoration Hardware, that was a business that was, you know, started many years ago and almost went bankrupt in the early 2000s, and a group of us investors took over the business in 2001 and recapitalized it and raised money and saved it from bankruptcy and kind of, kind of built a new business, and that's why we refer to it now as RH. And in many ways, it's, there's not one thing left over from the old Restoration Hardware, and in fact, we're in the process of closing all the old stores, and we won't be a mall-based retailer anymore unless we're in a more of a flagship-type location, which I'll talk to you about. But we say we, you know, we're curators of inspired design. We don't just curate product, but we say we curate product and people and ideas and inspiration, and we're in many different kinds of businesses. People may not know, we have a contemporary art business. We purchased what became one of the most famous pieces of art in the world two years ago. It was called The Rain Room. It was on display at the MoMA in New York for three months, and it had lines of five to 10 hours to see it. It became one of the most tweeted and Instagrammed events at the MoMA in history. We also have a music division. We have RH Music. We have our own record label. We curate musicians that we love and try to bring music that we love to the world. So, everything from food, and we now own Maison Marie, so we have a wine business and we have an antiques business. And so, we kind of say wine, design, art, antiques, music. It's, many people say you're building a lifestyle business. We say, no, we're building a love style business. If we don't truly love it and we're not passionate about it, it's not a business we're going to be in. We don't have a marketing department. We have a truth group, because we think marketing sometimes is about spinning the truth and putting lipstick on the pig, and we say, we just want to tell the truth and be very authentic about what we do, and hopefully people, we find people that believe what we believe and love what we love, and that's what we build our business around. So, it gives you a little bit of a sense of, of kind of, you know, how we think about our business in total. We say creators of inspiring spaces. First, let me, a few pictures here of just, you can see inside the new galleries that we build, you know, whether it's home furnishings or design, we think we operate at a higher level of any world-class interior designer, so you're going to see only the finest finishes, only the finest products. We like to say furniture of this quality has never been made in quantities before. We're trying to bring a level of design and taste and style to the world that was only accessible prior, behind the iron curtain of the design showrooms, and you needed either a resale license or an interior designer to access. These are just some photos. This is our Melrose Gallery in Los Angeles that was recently opened, and I'm going to show a short video of that gallery. It's something that we built from the ground up. This is another shot. I think this is out of our Atlanta Gallery, which I'll show you pictures of in a second. When we say we are creators of inspiring spaces, we like to say we're obsessed with great architecture. We either find it or we build it. But spaces that reflect human design, balance, symmetry, and the golden mean. You see a picture here of Leonardo da Vinci's Vitruvian Man. The Vitruvian Man was actually invented by Marcus Vitruvius. He was one of the original authors of the Ten Books of Architecture. He doesn't always come up as often, but we believe in building spaces that, when we're in them, they are very harmonious to how we're designed, and they just feel right, and they feel great, and we spend a lot of time and energy around that. So, and I'll give you a few examples of the, some of the projects we've done. This is the historic, our gallery at the historic post office in Greenwich, Connecticut, that we finished last year. This was a historic building that we purchased with the Malcolm family. They owned the Empire State Building in New York City. We did a complete restoration and adaptive reuse at the post office. It's now is one, I can't remember the national award we got, but from one of the best adaptive reuses in the United States of a building, and you'll see a short video on this. This is the second building built in the Back Bay in Boston. The first building was the church, of course. This was the Museum of Natural History that was built in 1863 in Boston. It then became, at some point, it became a Bonwood Teller Department Store, and they kind of crapped it up and put in pedestrian elevators and all kinds of things, and then it was, became another retailer who kind of crapped it up further. We spent basically $30 million and stripped this building back to its original bones. We tried to respect all the work of the original architects. In 1863, there wasn't elevators, so we took out the pedestrian elevators that were the ugly things blocking a lot of the beautiful architecture, and we said, if there was an elevator in 1863, what would it look like? And one of our favorite elevators in the world is in the Bradbury Building in Los Angeles. It was built in 1890, and we attempted to replicate the Bradbury elevator. It was an idea that almost lost me my job. I think Steve, what the original, but the original bid was $500,000. We usually spend $70,000 to build an elevator. We thought, you know, we opened up the floors to, had to bring the building back to what it was, the museum, and it had open floor plates and beautiful soaring ceilings, and, you know, we got rid of all these old retail mezzanines that were there, and, you know, everything that kind of junked up the building. And we said, okay, if we try to replicate that elevator and it goes up through the middle, what will it cost? And, because the goal was, that we wanted people that were, you know, alive back in the day, that this was, this building was first built, to come in with their grandchildren and say, you know, I'd imagined if I was a grandfather, I'd be with my grandson. I'd say, "See that elevator, son? I used to ride on that elevator when I was your age," although there was never an elevator in this building. And so, I think our first bid was $500,000, and we spent $2.5 million building an elevator. Almost cost me my career, but we have now the most famous elevator in all of Boston and maybe the East Coast. But I think it reflects how passionate we are about great design, about authenticity, about respecting local architecture and, and local history. This is a building we built from scratch, so I want to give you ideas of the different projects we do. This is, we call the RH Atlanta, the gallery at the estate in Buckhead. We purchased a piece of property. We decided not to go in the shopping center, and we said, if a modern southern estate was designed today, what might it look like? And, and we developed this building. It actually has a backyard with a 60-foot reflecting pool and cabanas and for outdoor furniture, and you think you're in a modern southern estate, although there's not that many that are six floors, but it has a rooftop that has views of the city and so on and so forth. But I think it does reflect our commitment to great architecture and great design. We work exclusively from a design point of view with Becken and Gillum Architects. Jim Gillum is here that leads much of our design, and, you know, Howard Beck and I have worked for years, who designed a lot of great projects in the Napa Valley. So, we don't use typical retail architects. This is what we just built. You'll see a video on this. This is RH Los Angeles, the gallery on Melrose Avenue. Actually, we call it RH West Hollywood. And here, this is an interesting project where we terraced it back. We did a 12,000-square-foot rooftop park that nobody thought would ever get approved, and, but you'll see it in the video, and he'll talk about it. We put 18 100-year-old olive trees on a rooftop with a decomposed granite rooftop that nobody thought, that nobody had ever done this before. Nobody knew how to do the drainage. We had to invent the drainage and invent a system with 93 drains and screens to make it happen, but if you, if you saw it and if you were there live, there's nothing like it in the world. You think you're in the south of France. And you can see here that what's interesting here, but when you think about the RH Yountville and what we're proposing, we're using the same steel and glass door systems that we used here in Los Angeles. So, you can see how the whole front opens. Here, we actually have, I think we, it's, I think it's 90% transparent in the front of the store, so the door's open during the day. So, on nice days, there's no reflective glass. You look right in. It's very pedestrian-friendly and very unique. This is a project that's under construction right now. This is RH Chicago, the gallery at the historic Three Arts Club. We'll be opening this this fall, I think in September. We're not sure right now. It's for September 11th. We're not sure if that's a lucky, very lucky day to do it, because of the timing. We may push it till the 12th. But this was a building that was mothballed for about 25 years in Chicago. It's in the historic Gold Coast. The Pritzkers lived two blocks away. Everybody was afraid of it. Nobody thought anything would get approved here. They thought it was going to be a, you know, a mausoleum and other things. We saw it, and we saw the potential in the building. We came with, you know, an adaptive reuse plan and received approval from the neighborhood, including all the Who's Who of Chicago and the zoo owners, the Pritzker Zoo, and everybody else. But I think they appreciate just how passionate we are about the space, and we're bringing it back to life, and we're doing a rooftop park. There's a center courtyard, and we're putting a steel and glass structure and creating a restaurant and a café. We have Maison Marie Napa Valley Wine Bar here, and we're, this was a building in the 1900s that was for young women to practice the arts, so the dramatic arts, the musical arts, and the fine arts. And so, we brought all those businesses back to life in this, in this location. We actually are leaving and restoring the original performance stage. We'll have acoustical performances in the afternoon and in the evenings to, to kind of celebrate the original ten of the building. We're putting a contemporary art gallery on the, on the top floor, again, to represent and support what we're doing there. And the only thing is, you know, the dramatic arts, we don't have yet. We don't know if we're going to do any plays or anything, but, but we are going to have the culinary arts and the wine arts. So, it'll be a very interesting retail experience. I like to say, we don't build retail stores. Most retail stores are archaic, windowless boxes that lack any sense of humanity. If you look at this now, this is not an indictment against Saks Fifth Avenue. The only reason I use this picture is because this building has now been torn down. We're building one of our galleries. This is the former Saks Fifth Avenue in Denver, Cherry Creek. But if you think about it, you know, plants die in a department store, right? There's no natural air, there's, I know, there's no natural light, no fresh air, and they're not really built for humanity. And so, what we try to do is build spaces that really address, you know, humans and really feel, you feel great in them, and they are all full of natural light and fresh air. So, just to show you a contrast of what we're building in the space, this building was knocked down, and this is what we have under construction. Now, again, much bigger than we're doing Yountville, but what we try to do is things that are right and indigenous to each of the neighborhoods. But we like to say we build spaces that blur the lines between residential and retail, indoors and outdoors, physical and digital. And so, the number-one response we get in our galleries from consumers, and the number-one comment we get is, "I just want to live here." Now, I've been in retail almost 40 years, and Mayor Dunbar knows I worked in my early days at The Gap with his wife, and I, and being in retail almost 40 years, I've never heard anybody say, "I wanted to live in a retail store," until now, and I think we're on to something special and very unique. So, with that in mind, I'm going to play a couple of videos for you. They're about three-minute videos. One is the video on the RH Greenwich, and so you'll see how we approach an adaptive reuse, and then after that, we'll play RH Melrose, and that's a build from scratch, and how we think about and approach projects. So, I'll play those, and I'll head back.
What I get inspired by is leading and not following, charting our own course, creating our own unique adventure. This is going to really take the idea of a gallery to another level. Taking a post office and turn it into something that's completely different takes a lot of imagination, and I think that's what inspires us.
Every place has its identity that you have to understand. First of all, you have an asset there that you can build on.
This building was the product of a very interesting time in history. There was a period of extraordinary growth. The United States government tried to encourage that growth by placing post offices, encouraging communication and the movement of goods, ideas across the country. So, Greenwich got their congressman to go to Washington to ask for a post office that would be appropriate for the prestige and the prosperity of Greenwich, and what they received was a jewel.
Whatever we were going to do with that post office, it was going to have to be smashing and beautiful in order to be accepted by the public.
What's interesting with these old buildings is, from an exterior point of view, they look magnificent, right? But from an interior point of view, the interior in the back of the house of the post office was basically a big empty shell. It had been modified, it had been changed, it created a lack of symmetry. So, we had to gut the entire building now. And I remember when I got to the location and everything was gone, except for the perimeter brick walls on three and a half sides, all being held up by stilts, right? So, it looked like a Hollywood set.
No lights, no nothing, but you could see right through everything. And I think it was a huge shock. We've done this, you know, this is, this is it? My God, we've destroyed the whole thing. And you had to do it to get what we needed.
What Jim is marvelous at doing is, he went back and found the original plans, and understanding what was the logic of the original architect, and we realized it was all centered on this historical obelisk.
Everything was essentially coming together to one point in the middle of an intersection of Arch Street and Greenwich Avenue.
Everything emanated from that. And so, what Jim did, he was able to create harmony between the exterior and the interior. He was able to line up all the exterior windows with the interior sightlines. The genius part is, we were able to basically double the square footage without any impact to the exterior historical building. So, we took all the part that was not historical internally and made it look like it was historical, and added a tremendous grand staircase that went up to a skylight, that went up to a second floor, conservatory and rooftop, that if you didn't know, you'd think it was always there.
So that when the public comes in, they say, "This is absolutely beautiful. It's completely, you know, it's completely changed, but it looks like it's always somehow been here."
It's the perfect example of a way that a historic building has been transformed into a building that will bring the best to Greenwich and will be a monument as it has been all along.
It's certainly not a cash-and-carry environment. It's, it's a lifestyle, a place to go and spend time.
I think what we try to do is, we try to create harmony. We try to create harmony with the community. We try to create harmony with the customers, and that harmony really comes from a respect of the community, a respect of the customers, a respect for what was, and a level of inspiration of what can be.
So, that is an example of an adaptive reuse in Greenwich, Connecticut, and again, that's won national awards now. And the next video is a project on Melrose Avenue in West Hollywood, where we took a series of old decrepit buildings in an area that's butted right next to residential, so a very tight community, and a retail street with a big opportunity to have a negative residential impact. We had approvals to build the building 45 feet up from the sidewalk, and we purposely chose not to do that. We thought that that would make too big of an impact. It would cast shadows on Earth Cafe across the street, which was a favorite spot in the neighborhood, and without any. And without any advice or input from the city, we decided to build something that we thought was going to be, have harmony with the city and, in a lot of ways, also offer a gift to the city. We built a rooftop park that is open to the public and is now a great place for the community to gather. There was nothing like it in the spot. So here's an example of one we built from scratch.
There's so much about the gallery on Melrose Avenue that is completely original and unique and actually is probably transformative. It just feels better than anything we've ever done. Los Angeles today is arguably the creative capital of the world. It's one of those places where you better be ready to do your best work. If you don't, you're just going to blend in and nobody's going to care. You could feel that it was going to be something spectacular. If you could pull all those things together, it would just attract a ton of people. So we had an opportunity here to build something from the ground up. But taking a traditional approach to Melrose would have been entirely the wrong thing to do.
When I first visited, I thought, wow, the fabric of this street is pretty residential. That made an impact on me in terms of, you know, how big the building should look in the context of the neighborhood.
So we said, "Look, we can't go up 40, 45 feet. How do we build something that's important, that is respectful for this community and our neighbors?" But we said, "Look, this is Los Angeles. This is one of the most important cities in the world. We have to do something that people haven't seen before."
And it's never been done in West Hollywood. They had no commercial projects that had actually tried to do a green roof.
At first, everybody said, "Well, you can't put trees like that on a roof." No one ever thought we'd get approval for the rooftop. It really comes down to how you frame things and what you help people see. We said, "We're not building another level. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to make this park a gift to the neighborhood and beautify the city."
It'll be a public space where the store's open. Anybody can use the roof.
We've got a ping-pong table up there. We've got a pool table up there. We've got fire pits up there. And what's interesting now is, how many people are up there just enjoying the space and appreciating what we did? We have a saying in our company that our design ethos really emanates from great architecture in that we either find it and readapt it, but if we can't find great architecture, then we'll build great architecture. So we said, "How do we create transparency? How do we really blur the lines between interiors and exteriors?"
We started with basically a concept that Gary had in mind of a terracing project from the street back.
During the day, the whole store falls open and you can look right in. You can walk right in. It feels nothing like a retail store.
You really don't know for sure whether you're inside or outside when you're on the ground level. It's sort of an artful expedition, you might say.
But there's a crown and touch that came together in a very unusual way. We were in Paris and there's this 10-foot, 11-foot sculpture of this winged goddess, right? I think somebody said the word "city of angels." And then we thought about it and said, "Wait a minute. What about that sculpture sitting on the top of the Melrose store? An angel presiding over the city of angels." You look up and you see this winged victory uplift at night or just beautiful during the day, and it's like she was always there.
In terms of changing people's lives and thinking about the way they live, I can't think of a company that even comes close to doing what Gary's attempting to do.
And I think it's an important part about who we are. We have a great level of empathy in our approach to design. And, you know, our goal is to create harmony.
It's not just, it's not a store. It really is a gallery of installations.
The reaction we never thought we'd get, but the one that we now aspire to hear is people saying, "Oh, my gosh, I just want to live here." People never say they want to live in a retail store, but we don't build retail stores.
Thank you for allowing us to present this. And so I think I've got another slide. Couple more slides. So let me just give you a quick walkthrough of the experience we're hoping to build here. We call this RH Yountville, the gallery in Napa Valley. And we say it's a curated and integrated experience of art, antiques, wine, and design. And we look at the project holistically, so it's really expanding on the original vision of Maisonnery. And the proposal is to have the three integrated buildings also integrate with the Maisonnery building. And the idea is, it looks like a, you know, one beautiful, you know, four buildings that work in harmony with one another and work together visually from the street. And so we're trying to create a really beautiful streetscape. Whoops, let me just go back. So you can see, I don't know if you see that, where's my little pointer? There it is, yeah, right there. You can see here, we've got this bluestone path that travels between the buildings. The other thing that you may not get from the design is the amount of transparency. It's not just the fold-back doors and windows that are here on the front, but they're mirrored on the backside of the building here. And then they're mirrored on the fronts of these buildings. So the transparency goes all the way from the front, all the way to the back of the building. You can actually see through all the structures. It all folds open. It also folds open side to side between this little courtyard that when you park and you walk through the middle of these two buildings, these doors and windows all open up side by side. So it's a very open and beautiful kind of European courtyard kind of feeling as you go through with, you know, beautiful transparency. There's really no dead ends until you get to the very back of the back buildings. And then the connection is side by side. We are moving the fire pit in Maisonnery from the back corner up to this point here. So the fire pit becomes a focal point, looking across to a fireplace. And what we're proposing is an outdoor pizza oven on the gallery side. And so you have a beautiful, harmonious visual connection between, this is on the gallery side. You can see how the buildings work in the courtyard and how people would stroll through. The look-through from Maisonnery to the gallery is centered, and you come down this bluestone path and you see the fireplace. So you can see the visual connection. We also did a big, beautiful window on this side, again, to create transparency and the feeling of connectivity. Here's a feeling you're inside, the center courtyard here. And here, you can see how the doors slide open and you can see through the structure and the vignettes and displays. And then here, you can see in the sides how these doors swing open and it opens side to side. So all the buildings really open and connect on, you know, most of the beautiful days here. And then this is the front building. I'm showing this view for a couple of reasons. One, this is at the north side of this building is where we'll have the big kitchen. And that will really be the food service area where you'll approach and place an order and then take your order. And you can't, it's not a really great view, and I'm sorry, I don't have a rendering of the sidewalk café, but you can see people sitting out here. This will all be pulled open. And we were proposed to allow people to eat and sit wherever they want to sit. If they want to sit in the front area, if they want to sit in the center courtyard, if they want to sit somewhere inside the gallery. It's not really, you know, it's just supposed to feel like a space you can interact and live in. So obviously, the sidewalk café portion of it will feel more distinctive and represent that. Some sample menus, just to give you an idea of what might be served in the mornings and in the afternoons. In the mornings, we have fresh baked pastries. I actually wrote the menus, and I'll tell you why I wrote the menus, as being a resident up here and wanting to get a pastry or a juice or get somebody a cup of coffee in the morning. Anybody that lives here knows there's really one place to go and has got a line of 50 people or more. And I love Thomas and very good friends with him. And, you know, I'm not trying to compete with him. I'm just trying to create a little bit more convenience for those of us who not only visit here as a tourist, but also live here. There's really not anywhere to go to get any kind of breakfast food or get any kind of juices or coffee in the morning that's convenient. So we've got fresh baked pastries, a simple organic scramble, rustic sourdough toast and butter, rustic sourdough avocado toast, seasonal organic fruit plates, a bowl of fresh organic blueberries, a bowl of fresh organic strawberries, fresh pressed juices, coffee, espresso, tea, and cappuccino. And in the afternoons, assorted sourdough baguette sandwiches. Think about a pizzeria in Paris where you've got beautiful baguette sandwiches wrapped in paper. And so whether it's prosciuttos or cheeses or vegetarian and so on and so forth, very simple fare. Whoops. Artisan sliced meats, artisan cheese plates, rustic sourdough avocado toast. That is an ode to my Sydney-born girlfriend in Australia. Everybody eats avocado toast. I never had it in my life until we started dating two years ago, and now I eat it almost every day. So we're going to have it for the mornings and the afternoons. Wood-fired mini pizzas, fresh tossed organic greens, burrata and organic heirloom tomatoes, and artisan seltzer sodas, coffee, espresso, cappuccino, and tea. Everything will be organic here. And yes, all of the plates, everything will be biodegradable. We're very much on sustainability, but that gives you a little sense for what it'll feel like. I also wanted to just mention some of the, you know, just reinforce some of the responses to the comments and suggestions from the design review when we were here a couple of months ago to the building height. We lowered the building height, as you know, by 1.6 feet. We've also made the glass openings across the front. We're going to propose them to be even wider than they are now, than they're even reflected in the current plans because we think we can make it even more transparent and make the building feel lighter. The setback, as you heard, we moved it back a foot to make the sidewalk wider. I think Jeffrey, you're the one who jogs in the morning and sometimes there's not enough room to get by. And so we actually said, "Let's make enough room, not only to walk, but if someone's jogging through the neighborhood, they can have enough width in the sidewalks." And as we said, we proposed to do the same and line everything up on the Maisonnery side of the building, so it's a very simple, connected path. As far as the parking monuments, I know in your plans, you have them at six feet. I don't think they ought to be six feet. I actually said we should lower them by two-thirds. I see them more at probably a four-foot height and be relatively lower with much bigger signage so people can see that it's parking. Because a lot of those things, we kind of joke around in our company, when it's not obvious to people, we kind of say, you know, "That's a Dionne Warwick. It's a walk-on-by." And, you know, it's interesting that it's there, but nobody sees it. So we want to try to make the parking obvious because I think there is a risk here that people will go by the building and then nowhere to park or will have backup on the Maisonnery side where you'd have limited parking. And for someone then to get back from the Maisonnery side, they'd have to go all the way around and through the neighborhood. So I think that parking sign becomes really, really important in how we address the monuments is going to be key. But I think they should be lower. I don't think that they should be six feet because I think they're just going to look a little odd. Exterior awning, the awning projection has been decreased a foot, so it gets pulled back. And we think it ought to be completely transparent. So I think while it says, you know, seated glass, I think it either ought to be transparent glass or it ought to be completely transparent with a pullback, you know, linen kind of canvas awning to provide shade and so on and so forth. But it should feel very lightweight. So that's, you know, some of the tweaks that we're making. Other than that, the next slide says, "Questions."
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Are there questions of the applicant? I have to go back to my view speakers.
I have to.
Let's not worry about pushing the button necessarily. If you have questions, Councilmember Dornbecker.
First of all, thank you very much. I'm very excited about the project for the north end of town. I think it'll really increase pedestrian traffic to that part of town. And, you know, we're, I know we're a destination for visitors from all over the world and all over the U.S., but we're also a small town. And the thing that concerns me the most, I must say, Mr. Friedman, is your price point. Can you give me an idea of what your price points from, you know, maximum to minimum might be?
Let's see. Maximum might be an indoor or outdoor leather, you know, or indoor leather sofa probably at $10,000 to a picture frame of $26, probably. If you think about the, and then if you take the wine part or the food part, the, I haven't priced the toast yet, but, I mean, I'm sure it's going to be, you know, $3 or something like that or something, you know. We want it to be accessible and, you know, and friendly to...
Will there be other retail objects of, for the home or whatever that would be, you know, $100 or less?
Oh, yeah. We sell, we're the biggest importer of Turkish towels in the world. We're the biggest importer of Belgian linen in the world today. We, so napkins, placemats, you know, at price points under $30. I mean, I think our napkins and placemats run $8 to $14 or something like that. Picture frames run anywhere from, I think, $22 to $80. Candlelight, things like that.
This seems like such a much smaller project than the grand façades and buildings. I'm a great admirer of the architecture that you've shown us, but is this going to be, you know, a grand enough project for you to stay in Yountville?
I mean, I live here. You know, I have a place here. So, yeah, no, I'm very excited about it. The team would probably tell you, you know, I'm involved in every little detail of this. And so, I mean, the most important thing for us is not grandness. I mean, you're just seeing some things because there were just projects that were recently done that, you know, if you're going into a major city and we're going to have a major presentation of our brand, it should look like, we have a small, little, how big are we in the Hamptons?
About the same size.
About the same size, a little, a cute little store in the Hamptons. If you saw what we did in the San Francisco Design District, it's 4,500 square feet and a little building that was built by Ed Hardy, a famous antique dealer.
I remember him.
Yeah, we're pretty flexible. I mean, I mean, this is, to us, this is just a, you know, we loved the Maisonnery building, loved what Michael did with Maisonnery and how he did an adaptive reuse to the building and brought it back to life. And I loved that there is a space next door and wanted to create something that felt fantastic for the community. I mean, that's where we start, right?
Well, parking is always a great concern, and that's why I was asking about your parking plan, especially if you have events for 100 people. And so I guess each time you do that, you'll have to have a permit anyway, so you'll have to have a parking plan for those. But I'm hoping that you're very aware of that. And as the mayor pointed out, the idea of having a one-way driveway, I don't know whether that would be problematic or not, but it troubles me because I'm afraid people will then try to come back down the same driveway.
Yeah. Well, we brought up the same things in the design of this. I think we have to have really outstanding signage. I mean, it can't be too subtle on the, you know, once you pull in, I think, you know, if you go to turn back, it's got to be like a freeway, like, you know, I mean, so somebody doesn't get on the freeway going the wrong way. I mean, it's got to be one-way, you know, exit, entrance only. And I think that's just, you know, that comes down to really good execution, and we have to execute that very well.
Well, I know that someone else is going to ask you about trash, so I won't, but anyway, welcome. And I think that this is going to really be a beautiful project.
Thank you, thank you. We're very excited about it and proud.
I'm happy to rejoin our meeting because the computer just kicked me out.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure if that's any kind of statement or not. So are there other speakers with, or other speakers? Are there councilmembers with any questions of the applicant? Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I kind of want to talk a little bit about, I certainly appreciate the idea that you have about allowing alcohol to move throughout all the buildings and in the café and between perhaps Maisonnery. But I'm also very sensitive that we don't turn it into Bourbon Street here. I love Bourbon Street, but I'm really happy it's in New Orleans.
Yeah, I don't drink, just by the way. So we're not, we have no vision of trying to create a highly alcohol, you know, charged thing at all, like Maisonnery. I don't know if you've been there, but it's a, you know, it's a very subtle, very sophisticated wine tasting experience. And what we want to do is just be able to translate that if we can. We don't know if the ABC will approve it or not, but if someone wanted to, you know, taste the Merlot or the wine and they were at the other building, we want to be able to do that. But we're not looking to, you know, have a, you know, a bar or anything. It's going to be very, very subtle. So it's not really even that important, to tell you the truth. If we can, it's great, just we don't want to, we don't like to tell customers what they can't do. So if somebody has a glass of wine at their Maisonnery and they want to go walk, you know, next door and look at something, or they want to go get a cheese plate and sit down on the, you know, the front sidewalk, we want to be able to say, "Yes, you may," rather than, "No, you can't." But we don't know, the ABC may not allow us to do that. But that's kind of the intent. The intent is to have a very subtle, sophisticated kind of experience that, you know, not, this is where you go get drunk. I mean, I quit drinking when I was 18 because, you know, I used to see guys get drunk at a party just so they can go... get drunk at a party, just so they can go say something stupid to a pretty girl, and I used to think, I'm already nervous enough, you know, I'd rather just kind of, you know, not embarrass myself any further. So, you know, we're not a, we're not a high-partying kind of DNA to, you know, what we do.
And I appreciate that. We like to be called the town of yes, too, but
Yeah.
Because of our jobs up here, sometimes we have to say no.
Absolutely, no, totally respect.
And put guidelines in, so.
Totally respect the questions.
So, I really appreciate your statements and your intent and what you're
Yeah.
Trying to do, and we'll leave a lot up to, what, ABC?
Exactly, yeah.
They have their rules. They like to say no all the time, so we'll take a, take a look at that and kind of go from there. And you also said that you had, probably your biggest risk was parking and the traffic, and even though we've tried to design stuff where people have to turn right on Madison when they go out, I think all of us who've been to R&amp;D Kitchen, and you sit by the windows, it doesn't take long before you see somebody
Yeah.
Make some strange, you know,
Yeah.
Zigzag through there. So, again, I'm a little concerned about how that's really going to work. I think you recognize that as a real challenge as well, and we really need to get that right.
Yeah, that's critical, because that's, I mean, to me, that's, it could become another negative perception by a customer, right? If all of a sudden, it's hard to figure out where to park, and now I got to go around, because, you know, so, we're going to do our very best to just design the signage to be very intuitive and very obvious without being ugly, and if we need to, you know, we're typically not a high-traffic business. I, you know, I don't know if you know this, but we're zoned showroom, not retail, in almost every place we've built a new gallery, because we only, only a small percentage of our business is cash and carry, and a lot of our business people, you know, order a sofa, obviously, they don't, they don't walk out of the, of the store with it. But because we will have some food service, and I would think, just because, you know, I watch Bouchon, and you'd see that in the morning, and, you know, it's a little bit chaotic, and people getting, stopping and dropping off, and where do you pull in? I think we may have to station somebody, you know, during key times out front, you know, kind of a parking person that's, you know, somehow helping people see signs or directing them in. But we, you know, I think we're people that pay high attention to our business. We really value our customers, and we really try to make sure we execute really, really well. So, you know, you have my commitment. I'm going to be here a lot of times, you know, a lot of them through Friday through Monday, and so I'll be here a lot of the days on the busiest times, and I'm not going to want to see chaos. So, I'm sure the team will be, you know, on their toes as it relates to parking and just, you know, trying to make it convenient for people. But I think that, you know, our first job is to design it to be intuitive, yeah.
And then the, just the last question about trash.
Mm-hmm.
So, as you know, it's a pretty tight street, Washington is going to be, sometimes across the street, they line up all their trash cans. It's just going to be, I think, certainly really important to me to have a dumpster. To do that, we have a unique trash company that sometimes says, oh, I can't get in there, so, and to get that, so.
I think what we'll do is, just hearing the feedback tonight, you know, we'll ask, planning to give us examples of who does trash best in the town, and we'll tell you we'll do it at least that good, if not better. You know, we'll emulate it. So, we'll come back to you with a separate elaborate trash plan. We have no problem investing into the right things. So, we don't want a smelly, you know, disarrayed trash thing, you know, where people are parking or driving by here. So, we have no, you know, if, I think we need to do our work with the teams and make sure the collaboration between North Block and us is really exceptional, and of course, when I say us, I include the thinking of what the masonry trash situation will be. So, we'll, but, you know, whatever the right approach and the right steps are, we'll build the best trash facility you have in the town.
Well, I think you can appreciate Yountville may be a little bit different than your other projects. This is the kind of stuff
Right, oh, no, no, no.
Is, you know, what, is a high level of concern for, so it's
Absolutely. And as I do, the last thing I want to do on a weekend when I'm in a good mood and want to relax is come by here and see a bunch of trash, or, you know, see people not being able to park correctly, and, you know, all the same concerns you have. Trust me, I share those and I hear those, and I'm glad I came and got to listen to all of this, because I think the dialogue and the concerns are, you know, the right things for us to go back and try to solve, so, yeah.
Vice Mayor, questions?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation and from all the work that your staff has put together. Looks to be a fantastic project. Just a couple of quick questions, you probably heard them already, I'll just ask. So, one of the things in the request is hours of operation from 8:00 a.m., and I get the breakfast thing.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a regular in-line, usually I get there before it. That said, you know, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and I wonder if you're applying, or you're making an application for a Type 41, which allows you the opportunity to serve alcohol, wine and beer, isn't that correct?
Yes.
That you're not going to be able to serve that till 9:00 p.m.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with what, why we have 9:00 p.m. in there, but I don't know if it's to conform with what masonry's hours are, or just to give us flexibility on some nights or during summer nights, because I think in the summertime, you know, if the sun's up and, you know, people are walking on the street, we want to be able to be open if it's appropriate, so, I, you know, I
I'll add a little, we're encouraging more evening activity to diversify, and, you know, what I would put in, the permit condition does not obligate them to, but it sets the maximum. We have found that there are a handful of our business establishments that are doing very well with some evening hours, because they provide a appropriate distraction, if you will, for people that are looking for something to do before or after their dinner reservations, and this fits into that, we believe. And also, for example, Jessup has had some success with some of their evening art exhibits and a variety of things. So, Overland is very successful from a retail component. They're historically open, you know, but this would probably be seasonal based on hours, because I would say that the summer is much more attractive to be wandering than maybe December 20th, although they might have all the Christmas shopping alternatives, so we'll, but I do think it's seasonal, and again, the hours are the maximum that they could be open.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, I guess, one question I had about your food service is, although you talk to both breakfast and you call it afternoons, which is subtle, does that consider, or have you considered the fact that, you know, in some ways, you're competing with your neighbors to the north, if you're presenting food in a manner, and I guess maybe my question is, have you had any feedback from them about what that perspective, what their perspective is? Because you do compete with them for breakfast, because Redwood does have breakfast.
Oh, do they have breakfast?
Don't tell anyone.
Do they really? I mean, are you kidding me? And I didn't even know that, thank you for letting me know.
Now, I'm probably on record. That's it.
From eight to 10.
Eight, I know he's on record.
I didn't know that, okay.
The power of marketing, true.
But I guess my question is, you know, again, you're, this isn't like we're authorizing or putting together authority for a restaurant
Yeah.
In that nature, because that was the prior use on this parcel.
Right.
We're considering the limited use or the limited type of restaurant. So, I guess, you know, my only question is, is if you had any feedback from any of the other neighbors from Burgundy Commons, from the residents that are living behind it, as to what their
Yeah, let me, let me ask the team.
Do we actually have the HOA president from Burgundy Commons?
I'm Ruben Perez, I live on 1869 Heritage.
And I'll ask you, if you could just hold off until, I'm happy you're here, because we want to hear from you, but we need to finish
I don't have much to say.
Okay.
I've talked to them quite a bit, but I'll wait.
Okay, we do need to finish the applicant's presentation and questions, and then we'll go to the public comment and we'll look, okay.
And we also have the general manager for the block here respond.
Okay, so, so to my question, and it's been answered, you've gone and spoken to your neighbors and
Yeah, we, I mean, I think everybody who's around us knows what we're doing. We know the folks that run the North Block, and I don't know the, I don't personally know Mr. Reddington, who has, you know, the Redwood, but I eat there almost every week during this, you know.
He knows you.
They would know me, I'm a really, really good customer there, and I plan to continue to eat there. I mean, ours is not really a restaurant. It's, to me, I, when we thought about it, you know, it's like, how do we create a level of hospitality, you know, and friendliness and street appeal, and then solve what I think are simple problems? Like, if you just want a sandwich today in town, like, I don't know where to get a sandwich, and, or, you know, some, you know, and you just want to sit down and enjoy something, or if you want to, and maybe you know things that I don't know, because I didn't know that they had breakfast. I was trying to find a place to get a croissant and some juice in the morning, and so I thought, well, why can't we do that? And that's, that's really how we kind of came at it, very kind of organically, and tried to have, have fare that is not readily available, you know. And a place, the other thing, as I say, you know, we started with kind of, part of the strategy was three letters, S.I.T., sit. Like, where do you sit, you know, on the street? There's not really somewhere to go and get, you know, a cup of coffee or something, and get a soda, and just kind of sit down, except at the place where everybody's already there. So, you know, Bouchon. Is it, at least, again, there might be other places, they're hidden, I don't know about them.
Well, you'll spend a little more time here when you're managing the traffic pattern, you'll be able to find it.
I'll be able to figure those things out, yeah, thank you.
I really have no other questions, other than to say, you know, I like that the fact this has got the architectural focus. My father's an architect, and
Oh, fantastic.
I know Mr. Backens as well as Mr. Gillum's work, but, you know, I look forward to seeing this thing come to fruition, so.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll be sure to educate you on more of our small business opportunities for you to enjoy here throughout the town.
Yeah, great, fantastic, that's fantastic, yeah.
A few questions, what's the frequency of your product turnover? Is it seasonal?
No, it's really once or twice a year. So, I know there were some questions around loading, so we're a really minor impact. We set a gallery, and it's like a home, and so there's really no major deliveries, except for kind of twice a year. We reset it during the summer, we'll put some more outdoor furniture, change maybe, you know, a few of the sofas and the textiles, and then, and then again, at holiday, we have a little bit of a setup, but we're not like a typical retail store that's changing a floor set every month. We, we have kind of two sets, the truck comes in the morning, we put in the new furniture, we take out the old furniture, and, you know, it's more, it's more like a, it's set all the time, the same way.
Okay.
Yeah.
And your presentation, it looks like you have significant uplighting in many of your locations, and we, I know, I don't think we're talking about lighting yet, but maybe it's more of a statement than a question, this town and the valley as a whole is very sensitive to light and darkness, and the subtlety can go a long way versus the much more pronounced, kind of robust, lighting scheme. So, you may be hearing that as we
Terrific.
Do talk about the lighting plans, because they do, it travels a significant way, and you're not that far away from a lot of residential property, even though you're not adjacent to it, so.
Makes, makes sense. Are people relatively happy with how masonry is lit at night, or is that a positive or negative one?
I don't
Because that's our, our goal is to conform.
I don't dare speak for others without having asked them that exact question, but
Okay, yeah, because our goal is to kind of emulate the, kind of the luminosity of masonry, so it looks like it's visually connected, so.
Much of what you presented had much more significant uplighting. When you're in a major city, you can, you can get away with that.
Oh, you mean the other
It's kind of my point.
The other projects, oh, yeah, sure, 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 yeah.
Okay. And the last thing I was going to mention, and the vice mayor just brought it up, I have a history of being very sensitive to our restaurants being restaurants, and our retail spaces, I know you're not calling yourself retail space, your galleries being galleries. So, you know, I heard the reference to an outdoor pizza oven as an idea, which kind of put a red flag up, because we had just had the conversation during the staff report about the limited service being restricted to the front building. So, again, more of a statement than a question at this point, maybe, but we need to make sure that we're clearly defined on what, you know, assuming that limited service is approved, that we know exactly what that means and where it can operate.
Sure.
And I know that Councilmember Mueller had a concern earlier this evening about how far does that use extend, and so
Sure.
We'll have some parameters, I'm sure, if we get approval on that piece.
Great.
So, those are my only questions at this point. Thank you for your presentation and
Thank you, thank you for your consideration, yeah.
Councilmember Mueller?
So, one last question, it's the question that everybody who's going to read the article in our Yountville Sun next week is wondering. So, what is your plan right now in terms of, when are you going to start building? When is it going to be open? And I know plans change, and I know we can't really
The idea is to start building once we get approvals, so.
So, two years from now, we're not going to see an empty lot over there?
Oh, no, I think, I don't see, but what are we targeting?
Do you want to get in the ground in like August, September?
We're actually talking to them about an expedited plan check process, so that they could break ground, at least on the grading, with just a grading permit, you know, maybe August 1st.
Okay, that's, I would like to see that.
Yeah, I think we're probably, what, it's about a 12-month build, you think, Steve?
Yeah, with the basement.
Yeah, with the basement, probably a 12-month build, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I look forward to hearing from the public that's here on this project, and if, you know, we could hear from the Burgundy Commons perspective, please introduce yourself on the microphone, so the world that's watching can know.
Good. Ruben Perez, I used to live in Burgundy Commons. I own a unit there, I rent a granny unit and a three-bedroom. I lived there 14 years. I now live on Heritage. I've met with, with them quite a bit. I can't speak for everybody, there's eight owners. We tried to work some deals out with Restoration Hardware about the gate. They were going to put one in front, one in the back, and do a lot of other things, but we couldn't get eight people to agree on anything, so, good luck. That's all, I mean, I, I want it, I think it's great.
Thank you.
And I'm tired of looking at the empty lot, so.
Thank you.
That's about all I have to say.
That's okay.
And if the gate goes in, that's great, if it doesn't, I don't really care, I don't think anybody does. I don't think we're going to get eight people from our area to say, yes, we want the gate. So, we may want it, we may not want it.
Okay.
I don't care.
Thank you. We can put a gate over to Heritage.
Is there any option to say you want a gate? Why not? There's a gate.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mayor Dunbar, Vice Mayor Hall and Town Council. My name's Felix Flynn. I represent the humanity right across the street from the proposed project. I've never met these folks, but it is good to finally put a name to the face, and I echo Vice Mayor Hall's concerns about hours of operation. Having lived across the street from various business endeavors at that site, whether it be Frankie, Johnny, Luigi, Perjanti, or whoever, I echo the concerns about hours of operation, especially considering the potential retail component. As Vice Mayor Hall pointed out, the marketplace, which they close at 7:00, and they have adequate parking. So, I think we're really facing two issues here, what hours are appropriate, and the ongoing questions about how it's best to handle parking. By the way, the, the parking cutout across the street at Jessup, I've observed over the last four or five years, works beautifully, not only for customers of Jessup, but also for folks who park their cars and walk to the various business endeavors, Chee Chee O, Ponchos, and Redwood, to name just a few. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
Representing North Block, neighborhood to the north, definitely in favor of this project, and looking forward to working out some of the details on the trash enclosure, and I too do like the idea of the cutout for additional parking, I think it's needed in the area.
Ty, just for the record, could you, I mean, I'm even going to ask you to spell it.
A-C-C-O-R-N-E-R-O.
U-R-O?
E-R-O.
Thank you for spelling that.
I figured you were going to ask, Michelle. I figured you were going to ask, Michelle. Other comments? Seeing so, no one else come forward, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this item and open further discussion and potential action from the council. So, uh, let me see if I can go back to my buttons here. Is there anyone, uh, offering to go first?
I'll go first.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'll agree to go first if we can, there's a long list of stuff we have to kind of talk about, so, we might have to come back and, you know, what comes up.
And I would ask that, if you can, in your comments, address your thoughts on the three exceptions that are being requested, as well as any other comments you might have.
Okay, uh, I've got that. So, specifically what staff is looking for, I'm okay with all three of those items. Uh, height of 20 feet, uh, the FAR for a one-story building, and the third exception, the minimum of the 20-foot. I'm okay with those. I also, for the record, want to agree that, uh, I'm okay with all the findings that were made in the resolution. I also would like to note that on page 11 of the resolution, under section 2, item 59, since the alcohol is very up in the air about what ABC is going to do and all of that, the second sentence says that evidence of a type 41 ABC license must be presented prior to occupancy. If you can't work out with ABC what you think you wanted to do and we don't, you don't have that license and somebody wants a glass of wine, they just go next door, then I don't want to restrict them from opening because they don't have a type 41 license.
We, we could add to the end of that condition if alcohol is desired to be served. You could, you could include that.
Okay.
So, they wouldn't have to, if they decided that they don't want to serve alcohol or don't want to get a type 41 license, they could still move forward.
Okay.
If I may, another alternative might be to eliminate the sentence altogether, because the, the previous part of the condition already says, uh, that alcohol consumption, assuming it's going to take place, shall conform to the rules.
Okay.
So, if, if you're concerned about the specificity of the license hanging up the project-
Right.
I might recommend eliminating-
Okay, if this doesn't need to be done.
The specificity altogether.
That, that's absolutely fine.
But, that's, that's not necessarily true. You can get all kinds of different licenses to sell alcohol.
That, that's what I mean, so that then whatever type they want to sell-
Well-
They'd need an appropriate license to do so.
But a 41 is a beer and wine license, there's other licenses for liquor, are we going to, you would be authorizing that in a sense.
And a limited service restaurant, that's, it, the only one that is allowed is a 41 with that, so.
Right, it's not a wine tasting room, because we're not approving a wine tasting room.
I see.
But, in any event, I, I think-
You think you can-
I think we can do that.
Yeah, I just don't, uh, want to not have them open.
So, let's be clear on, if you're proposing an edit to a condition, let's be clear what we're talking about, since we just kind of went back and kind of undid.
So, my, my edit would be just to delete the second sentence in, uh, part 2, item 59 of the resolution.
And then perhaps if you wanted to replace it with a limitation, so that it's beer and wine only, whatever license might allow that? If that's the concern that the rest of the council has.
Didn't you just say, our definition of limited service restaurant restricts it to beer and wine?
Says a type 41.
So, it's already, it would already be restricted-
To a type 41.
According to our use permit.
Right.
It wouldn't matter if-
I mean, I think it, I think it just would be helpful to have it be clear, that it be left in as a type 41, because that's, that's what allow, what is allowed. You could, you could actually include that alcohol consumption and sales, um, shall conform to the, the ABC rules and regulations for a type 41 license.
Yeah.
You could just, you could just do something like that.
Well, let's, uh-
And then you could eliminate the second, the second sentence entirely then.
Yeah. Okay.
If staff is clear on the language of that, let's, let's, uh, put a post-it on that and get back to it if the entire council wants to see that changed.
Okay. Uh, I'm, um, you know, we've talked a lot about the hours, um, I, as a, I am okay with the hours, they are, but I want to see a six-month provision, because if there are truly impacts, uh, then we can come back and visit that. But right now, I would like to see, um, our nightlife kind of be a little more lively than it is right now. You can only go to one business in town, so, but I am willing to, let's just make that a six-month provision, we'll hear back and, if that's a problem. And, uh, let's see, what else did I have? You know, I'm concerned about parking, I really, uh, don't have any great solutions, I'm kind of, maybe somebody else is going to bring something up, uh, maybe we should just, um, leave it up to staff to really have a final dialogue with the applicant to see what's really-
About special event parking in particular, or?
No, just, uh, the overall parking plan and, and the direction and the signage and all that, because we're really not approving, I mean, we're going to approve it, but there isn't a lot of specifics actually in the resolution about that.
Right.
So, it would be nice to actually kind of see that before I have to walk by and really look at it, just in case, but I wouldn't make it a, it's not a condition of this resolution. And, uh, I think I'll stop for now, but I might come back.
Okay. Councilmember Durham, you ready? Yes, I am.
I just want to say what an amazing report that was from the ZDRB.
Must have sounded very familiar.
Mm-hmm. And that's why this project excites me so much, because we got into in-depth about the, uh, delivery trucks and a lot of the items that were brought up today, that were, uh, that were, uh, put at ease by the fact that they will be able to make deliveries onto the property. Um, also, I, as far as the FAR, the height and the setback, I agree with the findings of the, um, of staff as well, and think that all of that should be allowed. I do, I do have a concern, though, about the crosswalk, and we talked about this at length at the ZDRB as well. Um, I walk over to that area on a daily basis, and I think I would just like to advise staff, not make it a, not make it a part of the resolution, but just advise staff that we really need to research how that goes in, given the parking, uh, to the left of Pedronee, and given to the cutout to the right, and the fact that Washington Street rises as it comes, it is higher on the north than it is on the south, um, and there's so many factors playing in, that, um, I really want to make sure we take a good look at how that crosswalk goes in as well. In terms of the cutout, I, I think it's come up and I just want to make a statement, that cutout, the whole idea, especially at the ZDRB meeting, was that it be an employ, um, pedestrian accessible. If we put a cutout into there, we're taking away that whole pedestrian accessibility on that side. So, I think it works great for the hotel and it works great for Yount, um, Jessup across the street, but I think for this, I love the fact they increased the sidewalk size. And actually, I was out there today measuring everything, walking it off, and I, I think it's going to be a great addition. And the fact that they even stepped up with one of the commissioners on the ZDRB, who expressed concern about the sidewalk in front of Masonry, and has gone that far to, um, go down to Masonry as well, um, excites me. So, those are my first thoughts in my first meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I did press the button, I just wanted to point that out.
I knew that.
Well, I agree with the findings, um, on the three, um, you know, the height, the FAR and the setback, certainly. Um, I'm glad that Jeff brought up the, um, parking cutout, because it worried me too. I like the idea of it being more pedestrian-friendly and, um, having that wide, um, sidewalk, I think is a, is a plus, really, personally. And, um, I think probably it would be a good idea to review in six months, but as you said, you're not even sure that you're going to, you know, be open, uh, that late, but in the summertime, it probably makes a lot of sense. But, I agree that we really need to have a few more, um, distractions in the evenings in Yountville, because it, it seems like the, you know, we roll up the sidewalks in the evening. So, from time to time, I think it'd be nice to have the option to come and hang out at RH.
I probably should have an evening to men to, too.
So, um, those are, those are how I feel about this project.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Uh, yes, again, I want to thank the applicant and everyone who's involved, um, staff for putting the report together. Uh, I'm okay with the findings, the height, the FAR and the setback. Um, I do want to make sure that we are going to retain the type 41 license. I know it's implicit in our LSR, but I think, you know, to have a liquor license, it would just be going a little maybe too far with this type of, uh, retail or showroom environment. I also am agreement with, with the rest of the council, um, with regards to a six-month provision on the timing. You never know. I know, uh, Councilwoman Dornbecker just said she would like more entertainment at night, you can come to my house, put my kids down, I'll be fine with that. As I said, my father was an architect and frankly Felix was my neighbor when I lived at 6706 Washington Street, which is immediately across the street from Maison Rie. Um, and although I miss Frankie, Johnny and Luigi, um, I'm grateful that finally it appears we're going to have something put on this vacant parcel. We've gone back and forth on your little driveway as to who was responsible for it, that was painful and arduous. That said, um, hopefully this can get resolved and we can get this project moving forward, and maybe finally, the residents of this town can say we have a hardware store in Yountville. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I, I think, just generally speaking, absolutely beautiful project. It doesn't mean I have 100% approval of what I'm listening to, I'll warn you about that, but, uh, there's no question of the quality of the architecture and the design, uh, it's really quite beautiful. There are some, uh, explicit concerns that, that I do have. Uh, the, the one-way access that I've already addressed, um, concerns me. Uh, I was also going to recommend a six-month review, we typically do that, and, especially because we have some, uh, potential conditions here that we're not totally comfortable with, but we're willing to, you know, not only trust staff, but trust how things really develop in, in real time. I would, uh, add to the, you know, the sign plan, that we definitely need a directional sign exiting this parcel back in that corner that's entering the North Block area. Uh, most people will have no idea how to get to Highway 29 correctly, so, let's make sure that's there. I'm not going to, uh, worry too much about the architectural details, because that's why you're paying all these people a ton of money to come up with excellent ideas and, and I'm going to defer to their judgment. Really, it's the issues that are, that are impacting our residents and our visitors. You've heard some already. Um, the, the size of the building, I know you addressed it by reducing it slightly, I, I don't know that a foot is really something that anybody can even identify, but, uh, I appreciate the fact that the staff added in the old condition, because in the two-plus-three years, whatever it's been, since it's been empty, it feels like it's been empty for a longer than that. There was a giant structure there that had several add-ons that were basically ugly, uh, functional but not very attractive, and it was a big, large, two-story block. I'm concerned about, uh, people seeing the parking, and I appreciate that you're already addressing, enhancing that. We don't want a big, I'm not sure I like the idea of a freeway sign about the, the one-way, I do not re-enter, but I know what you mean about it. You want it to be, um, explicit and I think-
Mayor Dunbar? I might suggest that condition number 16, um, which concerns the parking lot, um, shall be striped according to town standards. Um, we could, we could make that condition a little more robust, um, and, uh, say that enhanced signage, uh, directing, um, customers away from the site shall be included, um, to the satisfaction of the planning and building director. And that's one thing that we'll make sure either through, uh, you know, one-way striping on the entrance, which, if you look, the, the, the entrance driveway actually curves, it would be very difficult to go back out the wrong way, um, in, in my mind, just the way it's designed. But I think, I think that we can, if we amend this condition, we could probably enhance the signage and striping to, uh, to encourage correct, uh, directional, uh, access, something like that.
Something to that effect. I'd be fine with, with, uh, editing, uh, condition 16 to satisfy my concern. It specifically relates to not only egress, but access to Highway 29.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Mueller brought up the, the point that you might think it's explicit and in common sense, but when we see people making the completely unconventional, illegal, you turn around the concrete divider on, on Madison, nothing surprises us anymore.
I've seen it too, yes, right.
And the stop at the crosswalk signs that keep getting run over when people don't stop at the crosswalks, um, is also an indication of that. Uh, so, um, you know, I'm just getting back to, you know, the massing of the, the, um, frontage, originally was a little bit of a concern, but, um, also, as it's been explained, both by your presentation and the staff report, it, it really does kind of fit the streetscape that exists there, and so I, I appreciate that. Uh, I appreciate the effort to, uh, protect and respect the historical value of the existing Maison Rie building. I know Mr. Polinsky put, uh, significant, um, investment of his time and, uh, resources, I'll say, uh, into, um, those requirements when, when it was his turn to be up here. And so, uh, I think it's important that it's integrated seamlessly. So, um, I've already made my point about, um, sticking to conditions, uh, when we're, when we say limited service, we mean limited service. And, uh, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm very sensitive to the impacts we have, we're a culinary destination for a reason, and we've restricted others to the terms that we agree to, so, we will be holding you accountable to that, so. But, all in all, I think, uh, it's a, a beautiful project. We're all very tired of seeing the vacant lot, and, uh, you're going to more than enhance that, so, um, I think I've expressed my concerns and, um, if there was some thought that maybe, uh, there'd be additional comments, Councilmember Mueller or, or Durham, any other, any other comments?
Um, so, it's not really, um, explicit about where the restaurant use. It is in the, in the front building-
Front building.
And it's a portion of that. So, but that's, none of that information is in the resolution. Do we need to address that? I, I think what I'm hearing is, we want to limit it to that area and-
I think the, the staff reports made it clear, at least in my mind, that there will be service in the front building and the people that buy the, uh, food and beverage can take it basically anywhere on the property to enjoy it, even off-site, but that would be the, the sole transaction area.
But that's not addressed anywhere, the food, where is that addressed in the-
Well, you're actually, when you approve the floor plan, um, the, the floor plan identifies where the counter is, and that's-
Okay.
So implicitly, that's where the food is going to be-
Okay.
-collected. And, and if you look at our, our definition of limited service, it has to be ordered at a counter-
Right.
And paid for at the time it's ordered. So, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so, so the, um, the floor plan is part of, is in the resolution?
Yes, it's part of the record, so that-
Okay.
You know, any change to that would have to, uh, have a change to their use permit.
We'd have to have a amendment to the use permit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm absolutely fine with that. I think that takes care of it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion on action?
I pressed the motion button.
It didn't come up.
She did, it already says second.
And now it's, so did somebody hit a second button?
Hello?
I don't, I'm not getting it.
Well, there's two, uh, resolutions.
So, a motion by Councilmember Dornbecker, thank you for using our, our fine electronics, seconded by Councilmember Hall.
And it's for all the, all of the recommendations?
Three, I, I heard, I believe I heard, uh-
Sure, I-
Unanimous, uh-
Should I read?
You're going to be adopting the resolution, approving the mitigated negative deck, um, and the adopting the resolution.
I'll just read that out.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So, I move that we approve resolution 15-3264, approving the master development plan, including design review and use permit for RH Gallery, including commercial uses, retail limited service restaurant and special events at 6725 Washington Street, APN 03603 2-008, with the amendments that we spoke about.
Perfect, yes.
To condition 16 and condition 59.
Yeah, we got to do that. What about, does that include the motion for the neg deck, which is prior to that piece?
Yes, it's, there's two resolutions, yeah, there's two resolutions, and you can do it in one motion.
Then it does include the negative declaration as well.
Thank you.
Mike, are we clean on that? Are we good with, okay. Any further discussion?
And I'm, I'm just going to assume for parliamentary procedure-
Not assume anything, let's-
... purposes that, that you're amenable to the clarification the mayor made about the motion, that it's, it includes the amendments to 16 and-
59.
And then also a condition that there be a review in six months after operation.
Which would be a new condition.
That's a new condition.
So, technically, because she made the motion.
With those-
Right.
With those amendments.
And the seconder agrees to those changes.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor, please, please cast your ballots.
Press the button.
And watch your screens, see if it works. There we go, unanimous approval, 5-0. So, congratulations. So, congratulations. And I wish we still had members of our Chamber of Commerce here, Mr. Friedman, to give you a long list of places for coffee, pastries, and other retail opportunities.
But I actually love avocado on toast.
I'm going to make that so quick.
So, thank you all very much for your presentation, and welcome to Yountville.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you so much.
So, I think, just in the interest of the rest of our audience that has been here waiting for three hours to get to our next public hearing, we'll take a three-minute, which is Item 8B, JCB Tasting Salon at 6505 Washington Street. And I believe there are a couple disclosure statements to be read. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I've consulted the town attorney, and he's advised me that while the discussion on wine tasting regulations within the town of Yountville have no direct impact upon the operations of my employer, Cliff Lady Vineyards, to the extent there may be indirect impacts upon my employer, these economic impacts are not significant enough under the regulations of the FPPC to result in my disqualification. At this time, I'd like to participate, but I'm required to disclose that I'm an employee with Cliff Lady Vineyards, serving as its chief financial officer.
Thank you. And I will also read a short statement along the same lines. The Fair Political Practices Committee prohibits public officials from participating or influencing decisions in which one has a foreseeable material financial interest that is meaningfully different from that of the general public. Such a conflict would compel that official to recuse oneself from consideration of an application. To provide transparency related to this wine business permit application, my wife, Robin, is employed by the Good Life Wine Collective, a wine group that owns three wine businesses, including Just Up Cellars, which has a tasting room at the north end of Yountville. Her position is industry outreach and marketing, meaning she contacts industry partners to attract visitors to the Good Life Wine Collective brands. After receiving legal advice from our town attorney, I have determined I have no reasonably foreseeable expectation of a material financial benefit or interest related to my wife's employment. Her job has no bearing on my consideration of this application. Therefore, I will participate in this permit application request. I also want to disclose that I met a couple times over the last couple of years. A couple of years ago initially with Mr. Bossay to discuss potential retail sites in town, and then again, a couple of months ago, when the application was first being put together, and I was asked my opinion on how best to present the application to the town, but I did not engage in any either preconceived opinion-making or any details of that application. Left that to our town staff. So, with those disclosures made, I will invite staff to start off with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. In the interest of the late hour and the fact that this application is quite a bit more straightforward than the one we had previously, I'm going to make a very abbreviated staff report. However, there is a very robust staff report included in the packet that contains a lot of information. So, if I gloss over anything that you have questions about, please ask me during council questions. The public hearing this evening is the request of Wheeler Winery for a use permit to operate a wine tasting room at the Whistlestop Center at 6505 Washington Street. The proposed project is located in the space that was previously, excuse me, I'm choking on my carrot now, previously occupied by Cornerstone and Marches Vt. Fashions. As you know, Cornerstone Stellers recently moved to the west or the rear building, which left this spot available for use. The application was two-part. One of them was for a design review, which was actually considered by the ZDRB at their May 12 meeting. That was for installation of an outdoor patio. They actually took action and approved that, and that has been approved. So, the only part of the application that is before you this evening is the use permit, which would authorize the tasting room within the indoor space.
Marlene, if I could just...
Yes.
Outdoor patio, you mean the front?
Yes.
As proposed in the front of the building?
In the front of the building, right along Washington Street. So, that design review application was considered by the ZDRB, and they approved it at their May 12 meeting, subject to conditions. So, included in that application were some changes to landscaping, to take out some of the turf and other things, but those issues aren't before you this evening. It's simply the use of the tasting room itself. The, let's see, the entire space, let me find, is, the entire space is 9,470 square feet. The space under consideration this evening is 2,800 feet. Do you have the footprint? Included in your packet is the footprint, whoops, oh, it's coming up, okay, is the footprint of the tasting room. As you can see, it's designed to include the 25% retail diversity that is required by the Yountville Code. In addition, let's see, so the 25%, they will be serving 75% Napa wines. The JBC Collection includes wines from other places as well, and I'll let the applicant speak to some of those uses. It's very similar to what, you know, the spaces are, have been moved around from what with Cornerstone and how they were put together in terms of the uses, but the rooms themselves have not really changed at all. As you can see, there's going to be a gourmet shop in the area currently occupied by Marches under the previous approval. That will become a gourmet shop, and then the wine tasting and a private room for some additional wine tastings in the rear. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. Where staff is recommending approval, there are just a few conditions that are included. They have to do with parking. Again, this has a very limited impact because it is a much smaller operation than our age, but we are still requiring that they show us where they can do tandem parking in that rear parking lot, and that will be, that's a condition of approval that we've included in the resolution. And I think that's it. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. So, just for, again, to clarify for the council and the public, the proposed changes to the front patio and the landscaping area is presented on the A2.11, and then, where did it go? The other landscaping sheet?
Anything that was exterior is really not before...
Those have actually been approved already, so we're not even addressing those.
No, we're just addressing the interior and the use.
So, questions of the staff board, Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I might have some more later, but I just have a pet peeve, and I'm just going to throw it out there. Every Saturday, I walk by there, and the landscapers are out there on the weekends, and it just needs to stop. So, can we condition that as the renter, or is it the owner, or it's just driving me crazy? It's very loud and noisy, and that's why we have our ordinances.
Well, I would guess that the landscape company is for the entire complex. Whether we could put a condition to...
That has no bearing on the use of the building, I don't think. I don't think that we have the authority to even address that.
So, we have no authority?
I mean, in this context, for this agendized item, I don't see that as...
If the noise exceeds the town requirements for nuisance, then we could certainly, you know, work with them on a code enforcement action.
Okay, so it's outside of this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, really want to bring it up because I think it needs attention. I have some other questions, but I'm going to come back to those.
Do we have any other speakers? No, not yet, but other questions? Okay, let me just quickly scroll through my report here. I do remember seeing in the applicant's proposal letter, they were requesting eight special events, but in your staff report, it mentions six. Was that a...
I think that changed in the meantime from what they originally proposed.
So, the staff report is...
Is correct.
Is correct.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that consistency. And there was a mention that the additional patio space would result in one additional parking space, and I believe in your report, you said there's still sufficient parking on the overall parcel?
That's correct.
So, there are some parking spaces committed to the Java Hut. There are some that are committed to the Railway Inn use, which is right now...
Those aren't, that's on a separate parcel. Those parking spaces, I think, are on the parcel that is associated with the Java Hut and the hotel, as I understand.
Maybe we can get confirmation from that when you come forward, but my understanding was that was all a parcel in that there, some of those were shared, but we can have the applicant address that also, and I just want to make sure that we can confirm that because I know there was a concern that if there was increased traffic or increased employees to this use, that, just what the traffic implications were, I mean, the parking implications.
The mayor is correct. Those are actually on this parcel.
So, I'll just recommend that the applicant address that, and we can confirm if there is sufficient parking for the, I mean, we're talking one space, and if the contracts with Railway Inn and Java Hut have any impact, because I know there was a previous similar use in this primary space, and there's a retail use in the second space, so there may be no net effect here.
And we are requiring a tandem parking plan for the employees, so that's, you know, they would be providing additional parking above what is currently on the site. We're asking them to show us in this loading area in the back, somewhere where they could do some tandem parking for their employees.
Did I just hear you say that you were asking them to exceed their minimum requirement?
Yes.
And they're willing to work with us on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's all I have for right now. Any other follow-up questions of staff before Councilmember Mueller?
I think it's a question for our attorney regarding ADA accessibility with the upstairs use. Can you tell us what our risk might be there with how it's proposed?
They are not public spaces. They're for employees. It's not a part of this application from...
Well, and if there's a comparable condition that's accessible at the first level, there's not a requirement at the second level, correct?
Yeah, well, I hate to speak to the ADA off the cuff, but if I'm not mistaken, if it's not open to the public, then it doesn't have to necessarily be accessible. So, if it's strictly for employees, I don't think that it's subject to the same requirements as the main retail portion is.
Yes, that's my understanding.
But also, if I remember correctly, is there not some degree of indemnity in the conditions for approval as well?
There are, yes.
And so, if you're asking specifically for risk to the town, we'd be covered there as well. So, you know, strictly off the cuff, I think we have two levels of coverage there.
Because before, it wasn't just storage and restricted to staff, it was for special events or something like that, so.
That might be certainly...
I never understood how that, if that's okay or not.
No.
Well, do we have a condition? If I'm hearing what you're saying, we have a condition here that already says ADA accessibility must be adhered to?
I don't know about that, but we have a general condition, I think, that the applicant indemnifies the town for legal actions of various kinds. But, more to the point, I think if it's not open to the public, those upstairs areas, if that's strictly for employees, I'm not sure that it has to meet the same ADA requirements as everywhere else that is open to the public. And probably, if it has any application, it'll be completely different, not nearly as high. But again, I'm not really prepared to speak to ADA compliance right now. If it's something we need to look into, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Well, the question that pops into my head is if there's an employee that has disability, then that's a problem.
So, again, off the cuff, if an employer has a disabled employee, it's usually on the employer to make a reasonable accommodation to the employee and their specific needs. So, it would depend on the nature of the disability.
And I'd also like to clarify for the council, if you may recall, you actually recently approved Silver Trident. Silver Trident has a very similar situation where they have a second level, but it's a duplicate space, and part of the ADA accommodation is if you have a type of space and it has to be made accessible, but not all spaces have to be made accessible. So, they have an upstairs room, and they have a lower room.
And that was the point I was making about...
I'm just using that as an illustration.
As long as there's accommodation that is accessible.
But I'm also going to echo the fact that from a employee-only, they have a lot to more latitude in terms of how that's done, and also, it's their responsibility to comply with the ADA as it relates to their employees' needs.
Okay, thank you. Was that your question for now?
Yes.
I did just come across, Marlene, one other note that I made to myself, and I'm probably a little extra sensitive, being on the Ag Protection County Committee. Condition 13, individual wine support in the tasting salon must be made from a minimum of 75% Napa County grown grapes. I don't remember seeing us have this requirement, and maybe I just didn't see it in our other...
That's our standard condition.
That's actually your policy.
Because I remember there was just a decision made in the airport district.
That's actually a standard condition of all of our tasting room requirements.
Okay, then I just haven't noticed it before, and I guess I'm extra sensitive, being on the APAC committee. Okay, so that's it for questions. I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to address the council. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, and thank you, staff. Greatly appreciate everybody's help on this project, and thank you for everyone who's still in attendance.
And if you could just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yeah. My name is Tom Blackwood. I am the Director of Retail Operations for Bossay Collection. So, today, we are here to discuss our new experience at the former Cornerstone location, also known as the Whistlestop Center. Bossay Collection...
It's probably easier just to do a click.
Yeah, you got it. Okay. Perfect.
Here.
Nathan, I'll get rid of it.
All right, thanks, Nathan.
Do the next slide.
Yeah, well, so, we are comprised of 20-plus wineries worldwide. Each of our destinations in our family collection exists to inspire passion for the world of wine through experiences that unite emotion, style, and education. Here's a little photo montage of some of our local wineries. They include Deloche Vineyards in the Russian River, the historic Bruna Vista Winery in Sonoma, and Raymond Vineyards just up the road in St. Helena. So, our vision for Yountville is to create a true destination that unites wine tasting, retail, culinary discoveries, and a destination for the enjoyment of the JCB Collection of rare and allocated Napa Valley wines. We really want to be a part of the Yountville community. Today, we've participated in the Red and White Affair, Yountville Live, and have supported a number of other local events and fundraisers in the town of Yountville. We really are second to none to raise money for the local community, considering our involvement with Napa Valley Wine Auction, donations to the Boys and Girls Club, and Napa Hospice. So, our plan here is to create an amazing wine experience called the JCB Salon. This will be a tasting room and retail store that will encompass the unique JCB approach that unites exclusive Napa Valley wines, luxury style, and retail items curated and created by John Charles Bossay. The salon will focus on Napa Valley wines. We acknowledge the 75-25% rule, and also, we plan to focus on the districts and terroir of Napa Valley. We really want to educate our guests about Napa Valley and understand the restrictions in that area. Another part of our location will be the private room that we'll show on the map, but it's going to be called the Surrealist Room. And this is the latest series of wines created by John Charles. It's really bring back that 1920s movement of dreams and reality. John Charles is really about dreams, and I believe this new line of wines really brings it together. The wine itself is a crystal-clear decanter bottle, and each series will have a different brooch or different piece. This is the current Surrealist brooch. But at the end, we really want to bring together the JCB lifestyle here. So, the retail experience really will be about gourmet foods. This is to cover that requirement of the 25 retail space, but we hope to operate Epicure by JCB, a high-end gourmet, Epicure experience with specialty retail foods, offering selected assortments of gourmet food offerings for consumption off-site. Be very clear with that. We plan to use local purveyors, but also international purveyors, but to really create an amazing food destination here in town for locals and visitors to purchase shakuri, cheeses, and other high-end gourmet foods. Really, this is an option that is missing in the town of Yountville, and will allow local residents to not go to Napa or St. Helena to pick up these type of items. Also, the tasting salon will have unique JCB jewelry. I've included some of the additional brooches up here on the presentation. These are the type of brooches you'll see in the JCB Surrealist line, and other items include candles, glassware, and decanters. So, just finally, keeping my presentation short and sweet, which I think was good timing this evening, just another outline of the floor plan for the location. In the upper portion, you will see the main tasting salon with multiple bars and seating areas. To the right, lower portion, with the U shape, almost typed a bar, that is the Surrealist Room. And then to the left... And then to the left will be Epicure by JCB. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your concise report.
No, my pleasure.
Questions of the applicant. Wait a minute. I see no speakers pushing a button. Are there questions, however? One question I did have, and I was trying to see if we have it listed in our conditions, in terms of delivery and frequency of delivery, timing of delivery, do you have that plan in place yet?
We haven't solidified that plan, but most of our deliveries occur before 10:00 a.m. from our warehouse in American Canyon, and it's done by a van. We have a team locally that will deliver to this location.
So that goes for the food and the Epicure?
That will go for the tasting room for the Epicure. We have a commercial kitchen in the town of Napa that will deliver also up to two times a week. But again, from a small van, not from a large food distributor. We're going to handle receiving of large food distribution at a commercial kitchen we have taken over off of Tranca's California Boulevard in the town of Napa.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, question?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Just very briefly, and you probably heard this because you were here for the prior, you're again proposing 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And I know that the condition, putting it out there, it gives you sort of the flexibility around that. Is it your expectation you'll be having people there? This is probably because of the stop sign, one of the most highly-trafficked areas in town. And so I'm just curious, is there really an expectation you guys will be open and shutting the doors at 9:00 and then the party starts? Or how does that work?
Well, I'm glad to hear it is the most visited part of town.
Everybody has to stop there.
Yes. We, as mentioned prior, actually, the hours were encouraged by staff and was something we were definitely open to. I, as you know, being in the wine business, there'll be seasonal hours. I think slow seasonal, we'll see more of an 11:00 to 7:00 p.m. shift. I think busy season will see 11:00 to 9:00 possibly, maybe the Friday, Saturday, Sundays. It really will be an experience for me to see how the team operates. The epistere, we already were talking, will probably be 11:00 to 7:00. I don't envision many people needing charcuterie and cheese at 8:30 or 9:00 o'clock at night, but you never know.
You might be surprised.
Yes, we might be surprised. But really, I feel those hours are giving us the opportunity for growth or expansion, so we don't have to come back to the council. But I would envision that it would be more of a 11:00 to 7:00 p.m., generally, eight-hour shift. It makes it a lot easier with staffing and so forth.
Because otherwise, you're going to have overtime. I did have a question, because I don't see it anywhere in the staff report, and I don't remember it specifically, but with regards to signage. I mean, today, we have the Cornerstone seller sign. Maybe put me in the right direction? Or is there an anticipation of additional signage or different signage?
There actually, if you saw the original packet that was submitted, they did submit for some change in signs, but it wasn't consistent with the sign program for the entire center. And so what they agreed to do is they're not pursuing changing the types of signs through a master sign program at this time. They're simply going to change the copy on the existing signs that are on the Cornerstone and Marta's VT to reflect the change in copy. And then if they decide they want to pursue changes to the master sign program, that would come back as a separate item.
So this is really just about the use and not...
Just about the use.
Okay, thank you.
And just a follow-up...
We would like to come back and do a master signage program. We just, it's a big project on that property, and so we are going to do the administrative review with just verbiage change, maintaining the same sign, the look and feel, and then come back eventually with a master plan for the whole complex, which we'll have to do. And we weren't prepared to do that at this time.
And there's a lot of moving parts to that, and other tenants that need to get involved and so forth. And the interest in getting open was such that we said we can split this part out and you can come back later.
So my understanding is that the entire complex would have to be transitioned?
Correct.
So...
There was a change in basically the design. Because if you look at it now, they're wooden signs with kind of carved elements and that sort of thing. And what was originally in the packet, which you probably still have in that packet because we didn't break it out, was something a lot different than that. And we said, no, this has got to be, it's got to be uniform for the whole center.
So I'm going back to my point about the whistle stop being an entire parcel. So the railway inn is not on that parcel, nor is the caboose on the parcel, which is why Java Hut 2 has a unique sign.
Correct. They're not on the same parcel.
Even though they have a parking agreement on this parcel, they are their own parcels.
Yes. And the change in the Java Hut signs were, they replaced what was existing on the site just with the size and the shapes and so forth, just the change in copy.
Well, they have the awning that still says Caboose.
Correct.
But anyway, that's not our concern tonight. Yes, Councilmember Mueller?
The staff report says the hours end at 9:00 p.m., and the resolution says 10:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
So what's your, what's everybody's preference? What do we need to react to?
Well, I know that the special events may be. Again, I'm sorry that I'm not as familiar with this report as the last one.
The resolution's under item 12.
Item 12.
And it mentions indoor time for 10:00 p.m. and then...
Patio time is dark.
I'm just thinking that we may have suggested that other time for... Yeah, that was for the special events. So if you look down at condition 20, there was a desire to increase the hours for the special events till 10:00. So in essence, hours of the commercial uses, the reason I changed that to 10:00 was because of the special events in condition 12. But you could change that to 9:00. That's normal operation hours.
It was 9:00.
Correct.
But under item 12, it says 10:00 p.m. indoors.
That's what I'm saying.
The discussion now is potentially correcting that or changing that to 9:00 p.m.
Okay, and I would highly recommend, I would recommend that we put it to 9:00 p.m.
I agree. What we discussed was hours of operation would be 11:00 to 9:00 p.m. For our six special events, if we had a dinner, it could go till 10:00 p.m.
And that's the way it's written if we edit condition 12.
Okay, so that would be an edit on 12. Okay.
Did we all, well, we'll talk with Senator...
So was that, Councilmember Mueller, did you have any other...
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I guess my only general question is, I mean, there's another tasting room in Yountville. So we had Cornerstone. It took its use for the other parcel, and now we're effectively adding...
Well, there were two paid sellers. It's independent...
Were they separate use permits?
They started out together and then they separated. They were in the space that's being proposed as the Epicure space.
Did I stand corrected? Thank you.
You lost.
So no net loss.
No net loss?
We did lose a fitness center.
Ultimate game. We lost the fitness center. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions for the councils. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your consideration.
I invite any members of the public that would like to comment that have sat here for almost four hours now. No, it's been that entertaining a show just to watch. Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and invite further discussion or possible action from the council. Anybody pushing a button here to speak?
I think there's a motion button already picked.
All right. Again, I don't see that, so... There's a motion. Let's just do it verbally. Let's do a motion by Councilmember Mueller. Is there a second? I don't see a second yet.
There you go. Now you got a second. It just popped up.
Okay.
Is that...
It's not appearing on my side.
So let's just verbally, Councilmember Mueller is motioning, and Councilmember Durham, is that correct, is seconding?
Yeah, there you go.
And the motion is?
Hang on, I'm recording.
To clarify what has been seconded?
Clarify.
There you go.
As presented with the change to condition 12?
The whole title of the resolution pops up. You don't have to go back and forth. That's kind of cool. Motion to approve, motion, let's see, resolution 15-289, JCB Tasting Salon at 6505 Washington Street, APN 036-081-011, consider... We just did that. Okay.
Approving the use permit.
I'm just going to go ahead and correct. The resolution number is 15-3265. You're seeing a file ID on there, so just for the record.
And to change item 12...
To 9:00 p.m.
To 9:00 p.m. for the indoor use.
Correct.
Well, I want to make sure that it's clear if that's the motion to second the indoor use, want to make sure that that includes the patio use.
The patio is till dark. That's what we have in the resolution.
But I thought we were talking about the change being the hours of operation.
Yes, the hours of operation is that the patio would only be open until dark. So in other words...
How can the patio be open if the hours of operation close at 9:00 o'clock?
No, it closes at dark. The patio closes at dark. So in other words, they can have the use indoors after dark. It's in the summertime.
It's assuming dark comes before 9:00 o'clock.
I'm assuming dark comes before 9:00 o'clock.
So I'll invite the motioner to clarify if this is what the intent is. Hours of operation, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then special events can go 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is that your intent of the motion?
Yes.
And there is no condition of darkness outdoors. This is hours of operation.
Hours of operation for number 12, patio is daily from 11:00 a.m. till dark.
But that's not what the motion is.
Yeah, so if you want to take that out, that's fine.
The motion would be to revise that, take out that condition, and change the one hours of operation line to be 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Actually, I was, maybe someone can make a substitute motion, because I'm fine with the patio closing at dark, which is in item 12 right now.
And item 20 is your 10:00 p.m. for special events.
And I'm not proposing any change there. So the only change is part of item 12, that it be changed from 10:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the indoor use, and no change to the patio use.
And Councilmember Durham, are you supportive of that?
Yes, definitely.
So then, part of the discussion, how do you have the business closed at 9:00 o'clock and the patio stays open until dark? If there is a condition, who's deciding?
What's dark?
I mean...
You could say dark or no later than 9:00 p.m. If you wanted to, if you were, in the very, what, how many days of the year that dark is after 9:00? I don't even know if it is dark after 9:00.
So maybe I'm much ado about nothing.
Yeah, we're assuming it's not going to be dark after 9:00.
We could say dark or 9:00 p.m., whichever is earlier.
If the council supports the motion as it is, then we don't have to discuss it any further.
I'm fine.
So there's a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please cast your ballots. Or opposed, or abstaining. And the answer is?
Boyse Collection. I'm not switching because it was a lot of confusion.
You're just adding to the drama now.
Yeah.
Any moment now.
Wait for a second.
Well, let's make sure that that was the correct vote for the correct item. Was that...
It is going to be a motion and a second for your, for the resolution.
But it only flashed up there for a split second?
That's all we get. That's all we get at this point. Because it was starting to record when you guys decided to go off and readjust some of those things.
So I will verbally say that was a 5-0 unanimous vote in favor of the application with the modification as presented. Thank you, and thank you for enduring. You know, in a few days, you won't even remember how long you were here.
Till dark.
Till dark. Yes, which is now 10 to 10. Thank you. So let's move on as expediently as possible to try to get out by our allotted time. The next item is considering a request that I have to allow me to represent the council with a letter in support of Congressman Mike Thompson's nomination of Sherri and Carolyn Staglin for the Presidential Medal of Freedom. This request came to me from the congressman's office and included, and I believe everyone was given a copy of the letter that Congressman Thompson sent to the president, highlighting the reasons that he believes the Staglins warrant this recognition. And according to our protocol, prior to me being able to take any position on behalf of the council, it needs to be approved by the council. So that's what's before you. Any thoughts, Councilmember Mueller?
I'm just a little confused. So Mike Thompson's already written a letter to the President of the United States, and now he's asking you to write an additional letter in support of his letter?
They have requested each of the cities in Napa County do this, and I believe American Canyon and Napa have drafted.
That is correct.
Others, I don't remember if Cal Stogge already has or not.
They're in process.
Yeah. I think all the cities either have done it or it's under consideration to do it. Because the congressman apparently feels, the way this is done, there are many people that get recommended, and the more support that's shown by local jurisdictions, the more impact it has.
So you're just supporting his letter, then?
Correct.
And that's...
And the language of the letter would basically be pulled from his letter, shortened probably significantly, and then just put on Town Letterhead with my signature.
Okay.
And I just want to say this is in conformance with the Town Council protocols, as the mayor has identified.
Any other thoughts, comments? So is there...
I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Yeah, I'm not even sure we need a formal motion.
Do we have to?
Okay. So is there a button we can push on this?
I have a seconded someone.
I got kicked out of the agenda again. Michelle?
There you go.
Just so you know, Michelle, I got kicked out again.
Okay.
At the agenda. That's twice now. I'm taking it personally.
I'm sorry.
So the motion came up as Councilmember Dornbecker, seconded by Vice Mayor Hall.
Are you voting yes on that, Mayor?
Yes.
And I've checked that box for you on our record.
That's all unanimously approved. Thank you very much. And I'm happy to give all of you a copy of the letter once it's written for your...
Oh, good. Thank you.
For your files, sure. Okay, staff informational reports. I think we had at least one that I had requested. Are there any that are being proposed by staff right now? Wasn't there going to be an update on, was it the paving? Let me see if I have a note.
We have staff. Here comes staff.
Well, the only thing I would say is the paving program is in full swing. They've been working on their digouts and their repaving, and the slurry seal is scheduled for next week, or micro-surfacing. I used the wrong term.
Micro-surfacing. It should start on Tuesday. It'll be Washington and Oak Circle and the areas that are slated to be micro-surfaced. But they're doing some, they've been doing, you've probably noticed, they've been doing some patching on Washington where the asphalt has been pushed by the larger vehicles.
Is that work being done on Friday? Is it on Washington in particular I'm concerned? Just because this is auction weekend and there are going to be a significant number of people in the valley.
You know, I'll check, I'll recheck the schedule and make sure that they're not working on Friday. I know they're not working on Monday.
I'm fairly confident they're not, Mayor, because we generally have limitations in their work schedule. Like I say, they're doing their digout work. They were focusing on Washington already, so most of that's occurred.
Yeah, and once in the neighborhoods, it's not as much of an eventual impact.
And that's what I'm saying. They were focusing on that now. And then the micro-surfacing begins next week on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Okay. Great. No other staff info reports? Okay. Meeting reports, just very quickly. Today was the first public hearing in the flood control for the 2015-16 budget. As often is the case, no one in the audience for that, and it'll be potentially approved on June 16th. NCTPA...
I think I was the only one that went to that one.
Right.
So we... Yeah, we approved the budget, or we could have done a second reading. I couldn't find the agenda. It seemed to have disappeared. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, that they presented an analysis of how all the local trolleys and everything are doing. And for the last quarter, ours is down by 22%. So Tom Roberts is going to actually send out this little flyer and put it in everyone's mailbox that looks like an old-fashioned ticket. Just remind everybody to use a trolley. I don't know why.
I actually do know why. It's going to sound kind of odd, but it's actually annotated to the opening of the reopening of the bar on-site at the Veterans Home. And that has an impact in some of the Veterans Home resident traffic in terms of it's coming down to local watering holes. So it's an anecdotal, but it actually matches the decline. But I think it also will show us another opportunity to market to our residents. We continue to put information about the trolley in the newsletter, remind people to use it. We continue to put information about the trolley in the newsletter, remind people to use it. But the mild winter also contributed to more people walking than supposed to riding, so it's just--
And our trolley has been offline a significant number of days, which I've brought up on many occasions, and I'm not terribly pleased with. We should not, we have a backup trolley, so we should not be down two vehicles ever.
But like I say, the significant number is the--
I'm in their ear about that as well.
Bringing it up because it came up. Would you like a motion to extend past our 10:00 p.m. deadline?
No, not yet. I'm trying to make us go fast.
We have to go into closed session, so we have to do it.
Before I get off the paving thing, now I remember why I wanted to address this. I was recommending that we send a letter to the city of Napa, thanking them for the partnership on the sidewalk construction.
We'd be happy to put that together.
So if I can get the authorization from the council to do a letter to the city of Napa.
I actually think I'm going to, this is one where, since we've already approved the project and the coordination, this is well within our authority to do that. There's a, the protocols are, and it's something we don't have a-- I think your ability to, for us to pen a thank you letter for you on a project that the town initiated is appropriate.
Fair enough. Also, upcoming, I believe on the June 16th meeting, we are going to be recognizing Lee Hart. And several of us were at the Memorial Day Ceremony on Sunday at Pioneer Cemetery where Congressman Thompson, Assemblymember Dodd, representatives from Senator Woke's office were there giving proclamations recognizing the Native daughters of the Golden West and Lee Hart for his 50 years of service to the Pioneer Cemetery, as well as the community in general. That's my quick recap for that. Also, just to update you, I haven't given you an update yet on the meetings for the Ag Protection Advisory Committee for Napa County. The last meeting, we discussed potentially moving the minimum parcel size to 40 acres for winery development. But that did not receive a supermajority vote for a formal recommendation. The other option would be to have tiered permitting so that different sizes, different categories of parcel size could potentially have limited permit capabilities. Or it might be based on production capacity. What was determined is estate grapes nor net, and no net loss of vineyards will not be used as principal criteria for parcel winery development. Those are the updates I have for meetings. Any critical meeting updates, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Would you like, you haven't--
That's why I said critical reports. We don't have to do every report, every meeting that's listed here unless there's something that's really reportable. So if we have a waste management report--
Would you like a motion--
Can you do it in one minute?
No, because it says 10:00 p.m. Would you like a motion to--
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend our meeting past the 10:00 p.m. cutoff.
To 10:30? Doesn't have to go that long.
Unspecified time is fine with me.
Do we need a time specific, Michelle? Okay, so motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, report waste management.
On the upper waste management, we took the comments back from the council to the upper waste management board meeting that we were all in favor of hiring a consultant to really take an in-depth look at all the projects that were being proposed and provide alternatives. And we couldn't really act on that during that meeting, but it is going to come back to our meeting, and I think it's next week, as a formal action item. And there was a lot of head nodding of all the board members, so I think we'll get agreement there. And I'm also going to be talking to management to make sure that we get a very clear definition of how they're going to go out for the RFP process, because I think the most important thing is to have something very transparent so that we really know for our ratepayers if it's really in everyone's best interest to spend all that money. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any other meeting reports?
Well, I did attend the Watershed Information Center and Conservancy meeting wherein we approved the budget, and we also are preparing a presentation that we're going to take out to all the municipalities in the Napa Valley. And that will be probably from board members, and probably I will participate in that.
Very good.
Oh, I also wanted to bring up that I received this about build-your-own-rain-barrel. There's going to be a class in how to build your own rain barrel at Vintage High School on June 6th from 9:00 to 12:00. And it's only $20, and you can get the barrel, hardware and tools are provided. So come on down, make your own rain barrel, and pray for rain.
Any other meeting reports, comments? We have two items for closed session?
Yes, we do, very briefly, and I just will share one bit of information. LAFCO has appointed on an interim basis their management analyst, Brandon Freeman, is now serving as their interim executive officer in a--
Interesting.
Just sharing that with you, but I would anticipate 10 to 15 minutes is all we need in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll adjourn to closed--
So can you read those closed session into the records so that we, the public knows what we're speaking to? Conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator, Steve Rogers, employee organizations, our YEA Mid Management Association, and non-represented management employees.